All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 5:05 PM and I hereby call this joint meeting of the Student Senate and the Ames City Council to order. On the Student Government side, as always, we'll start with a roll call. When I call your name, please say here or present. Ayono Dimhoff.
Here.
Rahman. Rolls.
Here.
Reinhardt. Marcus.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Pelzer.
Here.
O'Connor. Pallan.
Here.
Moisango.
Yes.
Nivenhoven.
Here.
Keikun.
Yes.
Kamire.
Here.
Pettasani.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Agarwal.
Here.
Shamsaei.
Yes.
Verger.
Yes.
Momine.
Here.
Nondal.
Yes.
James.
Here.
Bailey. Johnson.
Here.
Dugan. Neil. Slope.
Here.
Persley.
Here.
And Cronin. With that, on the Student Government side, we do have Quorum. I apologize, I was under the impression you were going to be late, so I was going to add you to the roll. Perfect. Senator Azan's presence. With that, we still have Quorum, so with that, I'll pass it over to the mayor.
Well, good evening. What I'm gonna do is just ask if each council member would be, just introduce themselves and what role they play and how long they have been in office, and also what you do for a living, just make it real quick. We'll start here with Bronwyn, and I will just share with the Student Government that we really made it a priority to, you know, be here. There's only one council member not present, and that's Amber Corriere, and she expresses her regrets. She actually works for Mainstream Living, and they have a board meeting on the third Wednesday night of the month. It was not gonna be held this month, and so she's planned on being here, but it was, ended up being called, and so she has expressed interest to talk to anybody on her own time, if you want to reach out to her and discuss it with her. So Bronwyn, we'll start with you, and then actually, we also have our city manager, Steve Shanker, is over here, and also our Assistant City Manager, Brian Phillips, and our Police Chief, who we'll hear from in a little while, over here. So Bronwyn, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Bronwyn Beatty Hansen, and I serve for Ward One for the City Council, which is a lot of Old Town and South Ames and reaching into the sort of South Campus area. This is my ninth year on council. My day job is that I work at Wheat's Field Cooperative in Ames. It's like a natural foods grocery store, right in downtown. And then I also serve on the Transit Board currently, which is the SciRide Board, and I really have learned a lot doing that, and I appreciate doing that, so that's a little about me.
And where'd you graduate from?
Oh, Iowa State, yes.
Yeah.
I served on student government in my time, too, but I was a political science graduate. Iowa State, I have a master's here, from here as well. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having us. Love being here and talking to you all and learning from you, too, so.
Brian, have you ever been at a Student Government meeting before?
A few.
Brian is actually a former president of the student body, is that correct?
That's correct. And Chief Justice, nobody talks about that.
Okay, alright.
As also Chief Justice.
Alright, we'll move around. I think that, Anita.
Oh, I don't have the magic. Okay. Anita Rollins. I have formerly worked at Iowa State University. I have also a master's degree from here. I am the at-large member, one of the two at-large members of City Council, and I'm in my third year. And as others have said, I'm really excited to hear from students. You all are, make up a significant portion of our population, and we want to know that things are going well for you and how we can better partner with you.
Thank you. Tim?
Hey, good evening. My name is Tim Garten. I represent Ward Two, so north side of Ames. My day job, I spent the last 28 years here as an attorney in Ames. Run a law firm of Hastings and Garten. I'm in my 11th year on the City Council. I also teach two classes at Iowa State in the Business College, so I teach one of the three sections of business law. And then I have a group of seniors in the Entrepreneurship Program, so looking forward to the visit tonight. And also an Iowa Stater. My kids are fourth-generation Iowa Staters, so we love being here, so thanks.
Gloria.
I'm Gloria Betcher. I'm in my 11th year on City Council. My day job is being an English professor here at Iowa State. I teach a lot of professional communication, English 30/20, and I'm also a specialist in medieval British literature. So if any of you need arts and humanities credits in the spring, I'm teaching a course on Robin Hood, English 37/30, and I'm also teaching film history. So check out the classes. I'm happy to be here. I represent Ward Three.
Part of my ward is in the South Campus area, part of my ward is west of campus, and part of it is down near the Research Park, so I have a broadly dispersed ward, and I am looking forward to hearing your concerns.
Thank you. Rachel?
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel. Yeah? Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay. My name's Rachel Junk, and I'm the council member for Ward Four. Ward Four covers most of the residence halls on campus, as well as Freddie Court and Schiller Village, as well as a bit of the west of campus and west Ames area as well. This is my fifth year on council. I was elected to council first while I was a student at Iowa State, so I'm a recent grad chemical engineering in my MBA in 2023, and now my day job is I work at Renewable Energy and Sound as a project engineer. So really looking forward to today's meeting.
Thank you. A little bit about me, I'm a proud Iowa State grad also. I graduated in architecture, and I have two boys that both graduated and have a grandson that's planning on going in a year, so we're gonna have three generations. Can't beat Tim, he's got four, but anyway. But I practiced architecture for over 40 years, and I sold my company that I founded in 2016, fully retired in 2018, and retired to being mayor, representing the City of Ames, and I absolutely love it, but so, and I'm in my seventh year as being, as mayor. So thought that might be a little helpful to kind of get a little context, and we have a great representation. And Amber Corriere is the other at-large council member. We have four wards, and all four wards represented here, and we have two at-larges. One is Anita, and one is Amber. And Amber has been on council for 11 years also, is that right? 11 years? And her day job is, she is Chief Operating Officer for Mainstream Living, which focuses on helping people who are mentally and physically challenged, and it's a pretty good-sized organization with a number of homes here in Ames, as well as down the Moonee area, so growing, and a very important and worthy institution. So with that, thank you for the personal privilege, but a little color to who we are.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for the introductions. I think that's very helpful, as so many of our new members get to know many of you on the City Council for the first time. Really excited for the conversations we're going to have tonight, but before we get to that, we'll move directly into the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Vice Speaker Persley. So we may have covered it a little bit, but we do, for our Senate program this evening, have some time set aside for any opening welcoming messages for Mayor Hala, followed by President Hirsch.
Well, again, several council members mentioned it, but we look forward to this opportunity to engage and foster strong communication between Student Government and City Council, and as I think several also mentioned, we represent all of you. You are our constituents, and students make up about half of our city, so it's important for us to understand what's important to you, what's going on, looking forward to the conversation. And I just want to thank President Hirsch, Vice President Margaret, and also Emily, our ex officio. I will say this, is that I think shortly after you were elected, you reached out, and we started a conversation, and really appreciate the proactiveness and the desire to really strengthen that relationship between the city and the student government. And I will say this, too, is that President Winterstein is a friend of ours. She meets with us, we meet quarterly, Steve Shanker and I meet with her, and Vice President of Business and Finance, to really foster communication and interchange, and so we have it with, at the administration level, as well as with the Student Government. So looking forward to the conversation, taking any questions, and we hope that at the end of the evening, you have a greater appreciation for our relationship and what we can do to better serve you.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying thanks to the City Council members, Mayor Hala, our members in the audience, Student Government Senators and Cabinet Members. Really appreciate you all being here tonight, because we at Student Government recognize that we're only as strong as the connections that we have, and we feel like we have such a strong connection with the city this year, so thank you so much. And I want to recognize someone special, Emily Boland, who set this entire event up. She's been doing, done such a great job, and we really appreciate your leadership, so a round of applause to Emily here. Thank you. We look forward to a very productive meeting, so thank you. Perfect. Well, I think President Hirsch said it very well. We really appreciate you all being here. Again, thank you to everyone on the Student Government side, thank you to the City Council and everyone we have represented here tonight. Really want to encourage you all to take advantage of this from the Student Government side, ask some questions, let's have some good conversations, and make sure that we're learning important things that we can take back to our constituents. As we always add during this, just a few housekeeping notes for the sake of how this meeting works. If you're on the Student Government side, you might notice this is a little bit different than our traditional Senate meetings, and so instead of having items that we're voting on, items of business, we'll go through more of a guided discussion. So you'll see kind of our three, I believe it's three or four main topics on here, that we're going to try to keep to those timeframes that are on the agenda. You're welcome to talk about any of those things, but it would be great if you could talk about each sub-item within the categories in order, just so we can kind of have some structure to the conversation. And rest assured, if you don't have time to bring something up in a category, you'll have some time at the end in open discussion, and also, this is not meant to be the end of our relationship with the city. If you have questions that aren't answered tonight, we're happy to connect you, invite you to City Council meetings, and find other ways to have your questions answered. And in the same spirit, just as a housekeeping note, too, our Cabinet is also invited to participate tonight. There's some more flexibility with how these, how we do these meetings, where we're able to expand speaking privileges a little bit beyond just our Senate. So really encourage you all to get involved if you have something that's being talked about tonight that might fall in your area of expertise, so you guys absolutely are invited to take advantage as well. And so with that, we'll move into open forum. Once again, open forum is an opportunity for students to speak about any issues relevant to the student body. If anyone is here tonight for open forum, I would ask that you approach the podium on my right at this time. Seeing no one for open forum, we'll move into adopting this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, are there any objections to this agenda? Seeing no objections, it shall be adopted. And so with that, we'll move into our discussion finally for this evening, starting first with student life, opening it up with Welcome Weekend Review with Chief Huff and Chief Newton. If you wish to add anything, or we can open discussion, whatever your preference is. All right.
So I do a report to the City Council each year about Cyclone Welcome Weekend, how things went, calls for service, just kind of those things. So I think you may hear a theme that we think that activity has lessened a little bit over the last probably three years or so. We certainly had fewer calls for service, about 20-ish fewer than the year before. We did have fewer charges, and we also towed fewer vehicles, so all good trends that we like to see. I think the only thing kind of left over is we are seeing a very few number of properties that have become really the source of the issues that we've had, and those properties are on Wood, Hunt, Highland, and Knapp Street, and those are all houses, and for the last several years, it's pretty much been the same houses over and over again with parties of 200 to 500 people. There's no way a party of 200 to 500 people is gonna end well, it just can't happen. I always tell people that your party can be as large as your bathroom will accommodate, and after you get past that point, you're gonna have some problems. So we're gonna work with landlords of those properties throughout the rest of this year into next year, before Cyclone Welcome Weekend next year, and hopefully get them a little bit more engaged, like we've seen with the apartment managers and owners who've done a really nice job, to try and reduce the size of the parties at those locations. We're certainly not trying to get to no parties, I think that's unrealistic, and that's not what we're looking for, but we just need to see a little bit more reasonable level, I think is probably the best way to put it. So we're seeing a pretty good trend in the right direction, and we'd just like to see that continue.
Yeah, I would echo that. You know, a lot of our role during this day, besides the campus events, and we staff those, we're more support for the city and the city PD during this time. We've seen the same decrease, we've seen a trend that we like to see. The one trend that continues that is concerning is the behavior that is from people who have no ties to Iowa State, and that's the continuous theme for the last three years. We had like a, over 60% of our arrests the first year that we had Cyclone Welcome Weekend were related to non-students, had no affiliation, 45% the second year, and then this last year, it's up to that 58, 59% of the people we have contact with. And really, on a day like that, it takes a lot to draw the attention of law enforcement, because we do our, when we have major events, we look at a behavior-based model, so you have to do something that draws attention to you, and generally, we're finding that people who come from out of town are the ones that are drawing their attention. They came to Ames to roam around, find a party of 200 to 300 people that they could go visit, because nobody knows who they are, and then they have no other plans, and so we end up dealing with them. But our arrests numbers were down, our citations were down, you know, they're all on a positive trend. Next year adds some different nuances that we'll all have to think through and talk about. There happens to be a football game that day. We'll be playing in Ireland at around the time that normally people are out doing stuff, so I don't know what that day looks like, so we're open to input from students on what they think that weekend could look like.
All right, well, thank you very much. With that, the floor is open for any input or questions regarding Welcome Weekend. Excuse me, starting with Senator Kamire.
Thank you both so much for being here tonight. I just had a question, so related to next year and with the football game, what are considerations that you already have in mind for preparing for Cyclone Welcome Weekend on that day?
So there is a team, I'm on that team, that kind of looks at it, there's some folks from the President's Office as well, you know, a watch party has been discussed, there's some other activities that have been discussed. I still think it's wide open for other conversations on what that may look like. I think that game will be 10 or 11 our time, something like that, so, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to add Senator Udica to the roll. Are there any objections? Seeing none, he shall be sat, then moving to Senator Pettasani.
Thank you for both for being here and giving us your time. So I do have a question regarding, you guys did, Chief Newton did mention that there would be, there is a plan to look into a possible watch party. What is the plan behind it, at least the hypothetical of like what you guys are looking into, of would it be held in Jack Trice, would it be held in Hilton, and how would, and what would play, what roles, what would play into those decisions of like the past couple of years of how DIS has gone overall?
Yeah, I think that's where the conversation needs to come in, with DIS and others, and we're still in the early stages of those. I mean, we had, we had a first meeting scheduled this month to start talking through that, so I think it's open, you know, Katie Cran from Dr. Younger's office is part of that, and Haley Cook from the President's Office, and I would encourage you to reach out to them, too, and have some conversations.
Speaker Momine.
Hello, thank you for being here. Um, over here, sorry.
Like, where's the voice?
I have had the privilege of being here for the last three years, and it is a point of remembrance for me that we always talk about how outside and non-student are like the problems, where a lot of the problems come from anyways. I know for our regular games and such, we have substance-free tailgating. Do you think that that would be an effective way to bring together a large group of people without it becoming so disorderly?
You know, the, as I look at it, the Cyclone Welcome Weekend events are all, the ones hosted by the university are all substance-free events, and we do get a pretty good turnout. The dilemma becomes those who want to drink are gonna come and go drink regardless if you have the substance-free event, so it's this give and take of, what I'm trying to figure out is what kind of event would attract people away from drinking, and if you all have that magic idea, we'd love to hear it.
No, I've never been to one, but I, I'm pretty sure the magic thing is food, so...
I, I think you're right.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Vice Speaker Persley.
Would you guys be open to having student representation on your task force or meetings so that they can help you guys come up with ideas as it gets closer to the day?
Yeah, I can talk to the President's Office about that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator Rolls.
One question, so it's like, you guys talked about how a lot of the problems you have with Welcome Weekend is people that are not from Ames. Have you guys thought of like any like plans or actions to kind of deal with that, or is there some kind of ideas?
So a few. The reason that we have, part of the reason that we have the immediate towing for illegally parked vehicles is really to discourage a large number of people from coming to Ames for Cyclone Welcome Weekend. Obviously, the other flip side of that is it's pretty difficult for us to get around when there's a lot of illegally parked cars. We think that's had maybe some success, but we've talked to the other universities as well about, maybe you could help us out by having some events at your own school that might keep people from leaving U of I, you and I, wherever, to come to Ames for that day. You would think that they would have something going on that weekend, too, so I'm not sure why this has become such a big draw, but we're always looking for good ideas. You know, we do want to welcome our students back, we want everybody to have a good time, but I've said before, I think you've said before, Cyclone Welcome Weekend is for cyclones.
Yeah, and the conversations with the other universities, I did notice an impact this year. Part of the change, too, is you and I and Iowa are on the same schedule we are now. Previously, they weren't. Iowa started like a week later, and that's where, it was the second year that we saw a lot of University of Iowa students here. The good news for us is their Dean of Students is very cooperative and much willing to work with us, and so we were able to send all the names over to them, and they take action from there.
And just, we also share information with ISUPD, so between the two departments, so if we encounter students, they get that information as well, and their Dean of Students can deal with that.
Thank you, guys.
Councilwoman Betcher.
So I'm a resident of the South Campus area. I live over on Hayward, and I have really appreciated the efforts that have gone into reducing the size of the parties, and those efforts have not just come from our law enforcement, they've come from the student body. And we need your help in getting the word out that this isn't the time to invite other people into the community, so please, put the word out to your friends, this is a Cyclone Welcome Weekend, and the neighborhoods will be grateful to you, because really, there are people in my ward who are afraid when there's a 500-person party at the property next to them, and they've got little kids. So try and, and put the word out, maybe a little peer pressure, just to tone the parties down. People who live in these neighborhoods are not anti-party, they're anti-mob parties, and reasonable-sized gatherings are just celebratory, those large parties are just a nuisance. So please help us. Thank you.
I want to say, one other thing that really helped, too, and I have to give kudos to our whole campus senior leadership team, our Student Affairs, our Provost's Office, the President's Office, they were actually out going through the neighborhoods, many of them. The Provost actually rode with me during that day to see, and I do think that, I find that some students don't necessarily care about law enforcement, when they see the Dean of Students, they see Dean Evans drive up and hand them water and stuff, I've noticed behavior changes. And so it is great that we have, law enforcement can't do alone, it's a partnership, it's a, it takes all of us to make this a safe weekend.
All right, thank you. We'll go Senator Azan, followed by Jones, after which we'll have to probably move on to our next topic within the student life category.
Thank you so much for your time, first of all. So you talk about the issues related to illegal parking, especially in Cyclone Welcome Weekend, and you talk about like strategies or ideas, so that was just a random idea that I, you know, I just came into my mind. So since we're gonna have people, and there's some, there's not so much that we can stop people coming up, so what about the possibility of having more parking spaces? So thinking about along the lines, those lines might help, having more parking spaces will avoid illegal parking and avoid, you know, problems for, is there any way that we can have some sort of like more parking spaces dedicated for, you know, this Cyclone Welcome Weekend?
On that weekend, there's 19,000 parking stalls available on Iowa State University property, because we don't enforce parking on weekends.
Yeah.
It's just, I think it's about, parking is a lot about convenience, and that's why people park illegally a lot of times, they don't want to walk.
Thank you.
We have that same issue on football weekend, so if you could convince people to use the 19,000 open parking stalls, we would love it.
With that, Senator Jones has withdrawn, and so for the sake of expediency, unless there are any objections, we'll move into the ISUPD relationship with Ames PD category, and then we'll follow that with liquor licenses. And so once again, if either of you would wish to add any comments at the beginning, you're welcome to, else we'll move directly into discussion.
Yeah, I'll start just quickly with, I want to say, we have a great partnership and relationship. We, since the day I got here, I came from the University of Wisconsin-Madison before coming here, and I will say, city relationship and university relationship, at least on its face, definitely is different here, it's definitely a tighter-knit community. Part of that is the fact that we share records management systems, we share a radio system, we built the radio system in a partnership also with the county, I want to throw the county in there, too. The three agencies have such a tight working relationship, because we have to, because we share things, we need to, we need each other, we need to back each other up, we back Ames up on calls, Ames backs us up on calls. Neither of us have super-large police departments, so together, we're a much stronger force, and I will say that the relationship is alive and well, and mostly our street cops are the ones out there doing that job.
All true, don't have a lot more to add to that, but it is true that other university towns don't have the strong relationship that we do, so I'm, be honest with you, U of I, Iowa City PD, don't get along like we do. You and I, Cedar Falls PD, do not get along like we do, and I don't understand it either, but we do have a really strong relationship for all of those reasons, and I think... And I think that's all good for you as well, that it's not just ISUPD that may respond to a call that you're involved in. You're, you're gonna get Ames, you might get the State Patrol, Story County, we even have some DNR people in our area that will respond. And so that's all good for you.
And with that, the floor is open, starting first with Mayor Hala.
Chiefs, could you just talk about the jurisdiction in terms of where you normally, you know, operate and how, how the campus interfaces with the city?
Yeah, these are always tricky ones because I get asked, when one of my cops makes a traffic stop over by Gilbert, that's usually me because I live over that way. We're, we are state, state-certified peace officers. We do have statewide jurisdiction, but we, our main focus is anything owned and operated or leased by Iowa State University. So that's the easy way to, to talk about it.
And our folks, it's the city limits.
Moving then to Senator Agarwal.
I was just curious how you guys respond to and go about calls from residence halls? Like, I just want to know what the process looks like and like how?
Yeah.
What the numbers are on that?
Yeah, I mean, good news is, we don't get called a ton to the residence halls, right? Sometime, some we get called to more than others, but it's just like any other police call. Somebody calls us, we respond, we come in and we find out what's going on. Sometimes it's police actionable, a lot of times we find it's not. It's stuff that we just need to help them find the appropriate direction. Roommate disputes are a common one. And we help them get, you know, connected with the right resources on how to end that. The good news is, there's just not a lot of crime in the residence halls. The good news that I will tell you about, we have a dashboard on our website. If you go to that dashboard, you can click on buildings, you can search, you can see our calls for service. It's updated every day, so you can see arrests, you can see calls for service, and you can see our traffic stops on a daily basis.
Councilwoman Betcher.
Chief, you provided me with a perfect segue. I wanted to just call out both of the departments for their commitment to continuous improvement and transparency and examining things like the traffic stops that have been occurring. Both departments did analysis of that data in recent years. Both departments are publishing the kinds of stops that they make or calls that they go on. And I think that, from what I've seen, both departments are also committed to shifting as much interaction as possible to the, the correct responders. So for mental health calls, for example, having a mental health team like Arch or the, the trained members of the ISUPD involved in those kinds of, of calls rather than just assuming that it's a law enforcement issue. And so I, I want to commend both departments for your embracing of change and trying to address some of these newer campus issues that are also City of Ames issues.
And with that, the floor is open for any further discussion on that relationship between ISU and Ames PD. Senator Neal.
I'd like to thank you both for being here and speaking with us. We really appreciate it as a student body. I, obviously, a lot of people here read the news. We've seen a lot of, albeit isolated incidents going on in apartments and other off-campus residences involving ISU students. And I was just wondering, I'm guessing that's sort of really Ames PD that responds to that, but does ISUPD ever respond to that? And how do you balance those types of calls in complexes that are largely students living in them?
So we will respond if Ames asks us to assist. Like today, we assisted on a, a case. Actually, my officer just happened to be right there because he was making a traffic stop in that area, so was able to assist. So we'll, we're, I mean, we're tied in on the radio system, so if it's a major call, we'll respond, they'll respond to us in, in the same manner. It is their call for service and jurisdiction. You know, it, we, if it's an immediate emergency call, it doesn't matter who, which cop gets there. We, we're not gonna fight over that. Each agency will respond and then we'll sort it out later.
Thank you.
Mayor Hala, excuse me.
Councilwoman Betcher mentioned Arch. Some of the people may not know what Arch is. And also, I just, one of the things that you have collaborated on, we have collaborated on, is, is mental health in the community. Maybe just kind of touch on that and how both departments now are committed to, but also have trained professionals on there and also you're training your individual officers. So if you may just, so it's Arch, how we collaborate in mental health and what kind of, you know, staffing you have. I know I'm not, I shouldn't ask three questions at once, but I took a personal privilege.
Now I gotta write that down now. Right? So Arch is Alternative Response to Community Health, and that's a partnership with the city and the hospital. And so the responders to that is a, is a paramedic or EMT and a social worker from the hospital. And so all of those calls for service go through our, our communication center. And so they're dispatched just like any other call for service, which means the officers are hearing that dispatch, they know the information. Sometimes it's a co-response, so in some cases, an officer might respond with Arch until they're not needed anymore. Sometimes we'll respond first, make sure that things are safe, and then Arch might come in. And then our mental health advocate is heavily involved, not just with our agency, but also with Arch. So they do a lot of collaboration. She'll sometimes even go out with them, but her primary role is to get information to the providers when we have a call for service that likely includes some kind of mental health component to it. So she goes through the log every day, sends that information out, and then collaborates heavily with ISU's mental health advocates as well.
And on Arch, we do fund a portion of Arch as well. I will say, Arch doesn't, doesn't respond to campuses much, partially because I also have two full-time mental health advocates on our staff. One of our mental health, our mental health advocate supervisor also is the one who you all call a lot to come with the therapy dogs, Kinsey. Definitely the therapy dogs are a hit with our, our community. And so having both of them, and they work differing hours so that we're, we cover most of the hours where we have mental health calls for service. And then I also would like to remind people that mobile crisis is still an asset and a resource as well. Now their response takes a little bit longer, but we have found that they are still a valuable resource to our community to use.
And with that, the floor is open. All right, seeing no further questions or comments, we'll then move backwards for a moment onto liquor licenses. Really appreciate you being here.
I'm not 100% sure I know what you want to know about it, but I'm gonna take a stab at it. The process, maybe? For liquor licenses? I'm not, I'm not, okay.
That would be fantastic, yes, thank you.
Okay, so liquor licenses are actually issued by the state of Iowa, but they are approved by the local authority, in this case would be the city council. So all businesses in Ames that have a liquor license, those come up for renewal on a 12-month period for the most part, speaking a little bit generally, but generally every 12 months. So when a liquor license comes up for renewal, the police department provides a report to city council on any issues we've had, if they've failed compliance checks, if they've had a lot of underage individuals in the establishment. And we try and provide some context as well. So we may have an establishment that maybe has had 10 citations for on-premise. The other thing we try and report is whether or not we know the person had a fake ID. And so we try and give as much information as we can so that they can make an informed decision about whether to approve that license for renewal. Any denial of a license, then the appeal process then goes back to the state. So if a liquor license is denied at the local level, the first appeal goes to an administrative law judge, then to the director of the alcoholic beverages division, and then to district court, if I got that all in the right order. So I'm not sure what other questions you might have around that.
Chief, can you just talk a little more about, like if a license is not renewed, what happens? Can they still, you know, operate? And maybe just, maybe a couple of, not, don't name names, but essentially a couple of situations where, you know, councils has had a strong message from a policy standpoint and concerns and upon your recommendation, and, and why that is?
Yeah. So if a license is denied, an appeal, when, when an appeal is filed, then the business continues to operate like normal through that entire appeals process, which can take a very long time. So recently, we had one that went on for over a year. So a license was denied, it took over a year for the entire appeals process to kind of work its way through. And so you may see that it looks like no action has actually happened, but that's usually not the case because they're in that appeals process. We've had, in one case, we had several hearings. So we went through the administrative law judge, which in this case, we won. It then went to the next level, which we won again, but they continue to appeal, so they continue to operate. So it, if a business ultimately is shut down, it can take over a year. And I know that can be frustrating at times to people that it's, it takes that long if we have a problem business, but the appeals process just kind of keeps it open.
And who, who has to have a liquor license? It's not just adult beverage dispensaries in terms of a bar. Who else has to have one?
Yeah, restaurants, anybody that serves any kind of alcohol has to have a liquor license. And then we also do compliance checks yearly on almost all businesses that have a liquor license, just to make sure they're doing the right thing. So we send a person in who's underage, legitimately underage, they don't have any fake ID. If they're asked for an ID, they show their real ID that shows them to be underage, pretty low bar, but we do have people that fail compliance checks from time to time as well. I will say, we have pretty good cooperation from, most of our establishments don't have any issues with a lot of them ever. They're all, I think for the most part, trying to do the right thing. They don't want minors in the bar. That, that brings a lot of issues for them. It makes their insurance more expensive when they're not doing the right thing. So I think they're trying. But we also know that there's some folks out there that are gonna do everything they can to thwart those efforts. We were seeing a lot of fake IDs that were being bought online, generally from overseas. We've actually seen that drop off a little bit, going back to the traditional find somebody that looks like me fake ID. So it is what it is.
Does that cover also establishments that just sell but don't serve?
Yeah, yeah, retail. So your Hy-Vee's, your Fairways, they all have a liquor license as well, and we do compliance checks on them. So your retailers, your restaurants, your traditional bars, anybody that, that sells any kind of alcohol has to have a license.
All right, with that, the floor is open for any questions, starting with Speaker Momine.
So a little bit more of a technical question. After they have gone through the appeal process, if the state still like agrees with the judgment of the city council, is there a way for them to get their license back or are they just done indefinitely?
So that can be a little complicated. It kind of, it depends on a couple of different factors, but ultimately, if everything goes through the appeal process and they are ultimately denied, the person that holds the actual license can't get a license for two years. And the, the actual physical location can't have a licensed premise for a year. So it's, it's, can be devastating for a business. So that's why they don't want to get in that position in the first place. And it, it can be more complicated than that. Sometimes agreements are reached, but generally speaking, that's how, that's how it works. So if you ultimately lose, you, you might not be able to have a liquor licensed establishment at that spot for a year, even if it's somebody new.
Awesome, thank you, Ayil.
Senator Reinhart.
Hi, I know that there are a few 18-plus bars around Ames and kind of around Des Moines. Do you find that you have a lot of issues out of those bars with like selling alcohol to minors?
So there isn't any 18-plus bar that can serve, unless they're doing it illegally, and then you'll have to get with me afterwards. So anytime an establishment wants to have an event that is 18 and up, they have to get approval from the police department and they can't serve alcohol during the time where the 18 and up is, is in effect, if that makes sense. So that would actually, you can't just have it. That answer your question? Now I'm curious on what you're talking about.
Wasn't there, there was some kind of agreement with some restaurants though that were gonna not serve alcohol between a certain time period so people could go in there? And I'm fuzzy on the details, but I know it was just one or two places, maybe that's what she's referring to.
Yep, so there's the 50-50 rule, which basically means if 50% of your business is other than alcohol, so I'm mostly talking about a restaurant, then you can have minors in there. So like an Applebee's or Dublin Bay, you know, restaurants like that, they can have minors, obviously inside, because their, their business is primarily based on food. So they would, if there's a question, they actually have to show us receipts to prove that 50% of their business is other than alcohol or is food. But that, that's what covers those kind of establishments. Where we have issues is a restaurant who wants to serve alcohol can generally take care of that pretty easily because you go and you sit down at a table and the server can keep track of people. Where the problem comes in is where you're basically a bar that wants to try and serve food and make that 50% threshold. That's where places run into problems because then it's not so much sit down at a table and be served. People are moving around, floating around, and it's hard to keep track of them. And that's where they tend to get themselves in trouble with people that are underage getting in possession of alcohol.
And with that, are there any further questions or comments regarding liquor licenses? President Hirsch.
I have a question with, with compliance as well with those liquor licenses. Do a majority of your compliance checks take place on Welch Avenue and Campus Town? Or will you do compliance checks all around Ames?
Yeah, we do them all around Ames. So anyone that has a liquor license will get checked at some point. So those compliance checks where we send a minor in to go try and purchase alcohol, we do those at Hy-Vee, at Fairway, anywhere that has a liquor license, the restaurants that have a liquor license, so everybody gets hit. Downtown bars as well.
Senator Neal.
Another quick question about those compliance checks. Have you seen any trends either up or down in the ability for businesses to comply with compliance checks? Either more having less compliance or so on and so forth?
Yeah, honestly, as we came out of COVID, compliance was not very good. I don't know exactly why that is. Part of it may have been we weren't in the bars as much either during that time. Things have improved, I think, over the last couple of years where compliance has gotten better. And, and part of that, maybe we had a few businesses that didn't do a very good job and other businesses saw what was happening to them as a result of that. And that's probably good encouragement for them to try and do a better job. There's some other tools out there now. We've got, some of the bars will use scanners, and that's somewhat helpful. Sometimes we'll identify a fake ID. Also provides us the ability to look back and make sure they scanned somebody in. So I think we're seeing things actually get a little bit better on that front.
Thank you.
With that, are there any final questions or comments on this topic? Seeing none with that, we'll move into our next topic, but I really do want to thank Chief Huff and Chief Newton for both being here. We appreciate your time and expertise tonight. And so if that's still under the category of student life, we'll move into Message the Mayor, if Ex officio Boland wants to add some context to that.
Hi, guys. So we're all aware of the new Message the Mayor program from this year. We've had a lot of success with this program. Not just, I'm not, I'm not the only one receiving, receiving comments from our students, but also we've seen an increase in the amount of students that are emailing our city council email directly. So it's been really good for our civic engagement and I think council and mayor, they also appreciate it. And so I just wanted to give a little update on the success of that program and how it will lead to further engagement with the students.
So with that, any questions or comments about the Message the Mayor program? Starting with Vice Speaker Persley.
Do you have any specific projects that you guys have begun working on through that program?
I will say, we, when we receive information, usually we'll refer it back to staff. I think council can speak more on that. So usually, we receive communication and then we make a plan and then we will vote on it at a later meeting. I won't vote on it, they will vote on it.
I think it's still on its infant stages, and so. And so, as Emily mentioned, we welcome anyone emailing us. And actually, all of our cell phone numbers are on the website as well as our emails. You can actually click one link and email the entire council and mayor all at one time. Where you can go under each of our bios, you can actually email one of us directly. And we do welcome that. And we have gotten some direct emails from students. And also, we have some high school students that are engaging with us, too. I think it's a problem, I think it's an assignment from the government class, but that's okay, we'll count that. But anyway, anything we can do to foster communication, we will look forward to that.
Anything further on the Message the Mayor program? Seeing none, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move into our last category under student life, which is downtown engagement and dining diversification. So if that'll open the floor for any questions or comments related to either anything downtown or anything dining related you'd like to see in the city of Ames. Starting with Senator Pettisani.
I know this may have been repeated on multiple occasions and probably has been heard through the Message the Mayor program, but is there a plan to get at Canes and Ames?
Well, I know we would be heroes. Between that and Olive Garden, that's probably the two most requested restaurants. I'm not familiar with whether or not they have approached the city. I think you all can appreciate, businesses are very picky on where they go. They're looking at volume, they're looking at how many cars, how many people are going to walk through it. Location is going to be key also. I do know that both the president and vice president made it very clear that was a high priority, and that we would certainly welcome that coming to town. But as it stands right now, I'm not aware of it, but it may be in the mix. But I think that, I know that we would be, basically have a ticker tape parade by some students if it came to town, but unless the city manager has any further insight, I don't know if we do or not. I haven't heard of anything at this point in time.
Well, we did get a visit from the vice president. We got a message loud and clear that's an interest from the students. So I think they met with the Chamber of Commerce, but we've also started a dialogue with the company itself. And they have very prospective requirements where they're going to locate a restaurant like this. Many of it has, much of it has to do with the population, but in our case, it has to do with the location of drive-by, vehicles that drive by. Okay? So that's very important to them, vehicle counts. So we're trying to entice them and show them some sites. To be honest, they want to be on Duff Avenue. That's our most traveled area. And there's discussions going on. There's not a lot of vacant property, so there has to be a lot of movement of some of the existing buildings moving out, making ways, maybe relocating them to another space, and making it possible for them to come in and redevelop it. What you could all do is start a campaign, set a campaign to get ahold of the corporate office and say, Canes for Ames, and there's 20,000 signatures there, we want you there, right? Or 30,000 signatures, that will help. But we're aware of it, and we're looking, but they have a really focused area they want, and it's currently built up right now. We've got other spaces we've showed them or talked about, and they want to be on that South Duff corridor with a lot of vehicles. So we'll see if it can happen. There might be some movement in the future. They're looking at us, I think, now, but you can help reinforce it, because we're telling them how popular it is, even though we're not in a metropolitan area where they normally locate. So we're fighting uphill battle, but you can help us there, and we heard you, and we're looking, working at it.
And what is the process behind if a restaurant was to show interest of trying to be a part of the Ames community and being added to the city?
Well, the first thing is, and we stay out of it, is it's a real estate issue. After they decide that this is a market they want to be in, then they obviously have to identify a site that fits their requirements. And they look at cost of the land itself, and then rehabilitating it or renovating it if it's possible or needed. And they'll look at the ability to hire people, right? When you have these servers and those kind of businesses, so that's important. The labor market's important to them. And then the type of people who would visit their market. And I know they like to be in college towns, so that's what's still attractive to them. We're not the largest college towns they're in. So after they do that, it's not easy, but we facilitate site development with them. They'll work through our planning department, and we'll give them the site plan they need and help them through the building codes they'll need. So the first part for them is to find a site, find a site on South Duff that's acceptable to them. And from there, we can really help them through it.
I know there's an interest to try and get one in campus time, but that's one of the things that's a challenge, is just the traffic flow they need in order to justify coming to town, and they need to have a lot of customers. Not that you wouldn't have a lot of students going there, but that becomes a challenge.
All right. I would entertain a motion to add Senator Gopat to the roll. Are there any objections? Seeing none, he shall be sat. And we'll move over to Speaker Momine.
I have a bit of a follow-up. So the Burger King that is right by Duff, kind of by the intersection of Duff and Lincoln Way, two questions, would that work for them? Is that the kind of area that they're looking for? Specifically, it has to be on Duff? And if that's not what they're looking for, are there plans for what to do with that building?
Well, remember, they have their own team of site selectors, selectors. So they're aware, they're looking all over the area, and they're aware of that. And I'm not sure what their feeling is about that particular building, but we cannot interject into those decisions. Again, they have to make a decision where they want to be based on their criteria. So it's owned privately, all those properties are owned privately, and they have to contact the owner, and they have to be willing to sell it at an attractive price to the company, whether it's Burger, a new Burger King comes in, a Canes or an Olive Garden. So I'm not sure of all the plans that take place, because that all takes place behind the scenes. Those real estate transactions, they try to keep really quiet, because they don't want to show interest in a property, because it really increases the cost of the property. So I know they're looking, and we showed them everything we can along all the corridors they want. They want traffic counts. I'm telling you, it has a lot to do with traffic counts first. That is available, that particular site.
I thought that that site was already taken up by, go ahead, Ramon, please.
Yeah, I was going to mention, that's the Dunkin' Donuts, they're looking at that site. So I was looking back at my notes, on July 9th, we talked about some things they were asking for, reducing parking in order to be able to move into that Burger King spot, less setback for their drive-through, a waiver of a sidewalk that they weren't able to build. And so...
You have to sign.
No, it's not for sure until you see it happen. I'm always a believe it when I see it, but that building is being looked at by Dunkin', that Burger King building specifically.
All right. Ex officio Bolland.
I really appreciate all the questions about the Canes and the interests. One thing I will say is, behind the scenes, they've been working on this for a long time. Every single site that you guys might think of that'll work, they've thought about it, too. One of the goals of council is to increase student engagement in the downtown area, so looking at that Main Street area. And I was just, a slight suggestion to veer the conversation that way. I appreciate all the questions. Any further questions on this? You guys can come to me, and I'll refer you to the best person to talk to, likely Mr. Schanker.
Moving over then to Senator Neal.
A very general question about the downtown area. Obviously, there are a lot of great local businesses in that area, but it's hard for students to get down there and be attracted to that area. A lot of them are just, there are a lot of shops, also restaurants and bars that aren't super accessible for students who don't have cars or who aren't comfortable with CyRide. Are there any plans, as of now, to add any businesses or any events downtown that might attract students to go down there when they otherwise would be deterred from going down into that area?
Any council members want to weigh in on that one? Ramon?
Yeah, I mean, I think the best way to get downtown is, if you're a student and you don't have a car, is definitely CyRide. So both the red and the green route go to City Hall, and City Hall is like a block away from downtown. So I've been trying to take CyRide more and learn how to use that better, and I love it. So I'm curious if you'd expand on if people might... But I think it's the easiest way to get downtown. In terms of business mix, again, that has to do more with private market forces often than the council, but we try to encourage restaurant, retail, entertainment thing in that area rather than other uses that aren't as interesting. You know, oh gosh, other types of services, insurance, that kind of thing. Not that we disincentivize it, but we want to see restaurants, entertainment, retail in the downtown area.
I think to your question about events, I've had conversations with students over the past few years about if there's some energy in terms of celebrating different heritage months, for sake of discussion. And then we have a very energetic director of Ames Main Street. We also have Discover Ames, which is essentially the promoter of Ames entirely. So I think part of the challenge is that people, the time is limited in terms of doing planning. So if there's interest, I think that there would be an embracing of, how can we celebrate our diversity? We have over 100 nationalities that are here in Ames. I think that we would really enjoy seeing a wide variety that would appeal to a broad cross-sections of individuals. And I'll just close with this. What's interesting, we went on a peer city visit here a few months ago, and went up to Fargo, North Dakota. I mean, it's not in Canada, but you can probably see Canada from there, and it gets pretty cold up there. And they had a marketing study done, and the first thing the marketer said was, you have to get over it being winter up here. You have to embrace it versus criticize it. So they started out with a, they called it a frostable, F-R-O-S-T-I-V-E-L, for a weekend. It's now turned into a six-week-long celebration, and every weekend they have different things going on. They have ice sculptures, they have ping pong going on outside, and then they have, but the point is, is they have really tried to capture that. Well, that makes them unique from the standpoint that they're very, they have a long winter up there. Well, we have great diversity. So how can we do that? But if people are interested in doing that, I'd love to talk to them, or I can get in touch with Emily, but I think it's more or less trying to get together. And I think there's a lot of student groups here on campus, and the Asian American, AAPI, Asian American Pacific Honor Group does a phenomenal celebration here in the union. What can we do to celebrate, for example, Chinese New Year? So things are really significant. How can we do that? And I think that would also provide, I think the entire community would embrace it, not just the students. So I think it's more or less just trying to get that spun up, and I think that'd be a great opportunity, so I appreciate the question.
All right. We'll move over to Councilwoman Betcher, and then after that, we'll have to limit our Senate comments to the four senators that have their placards up right now, just for the sake of getting to our other topics.
So I'll take both aspects of what was said. Bronwyn mentioned using CyRide. Well, the recent graduating class of Leadership Ames is working on bringing back the dinky, which is their concept for a bus kind of transit system that will just run from campus to downtown and back again, and consistently. So they are working on that, and we don't have any kind of ETA on it, but they're committed to continuing to investigate that possibility. The other thing I would say is that we currently have downtown, a brewery, multiple restaurants of different food types, we have lots of small businesses, and eventually, we are going to have a plaza that is complete, where there will be the opportunity for a stage with music. We also have our Banshell Park, which offers music, and our city auditorium, which has Friday concerts of various musical types. So if you aren't aware of those kinds of opportunities, I would encourage you to check out the city of Ames, especially the city auditorium advertising for the kinds of musical groups that are being brought in at various times.
Senator Pelzer.
I was just curious, on the topic of downtown engagement and events, because there are a lot of great events downtown that I've been to since I grew up in Ames all my life, and I was curious if you were open to any suggestions of new events?
Yes.
Okay. Here is my very brief little pitch.
Tell you what, could you email that to Emily? You want to highlight, and I'm certainly open to it, but I think it'd be great to have that in written form, too, but please, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. I'll be sure to send that email. I was thinking something like a Taste of Ames, a celebration of culture, the local businesses and local diversity, where we'd have food booths down Main Street, music, art, and dance from the many unique communities within Ames, and it would be like free to attend for everyone.
Thank you very much. We'll go over to Senator Pettisani.
This is more regarding a problem with CyRide that I've noticed in terms of downtown, and it could have played a role in terms of downtown engagement, because last year alone, I've went to downtown about three or four times myself. And the frustrating thing for me about trying to get downtown at all was the bus routes. They ran very infrequently, so it was easier just to start walking and just get there faster than wait for the buses for like 30, 45, sometimes an hour, just for it to come to campus, then you just wait till you get there, kind of thing. It was just easier to walk there. So is there a way that you guys could look into maybe making those routes a bit more frequent? And there was an idea that was mentioned about a bus running between campus and downtown, so I guess that might solve it, but making maybe CyRide run a bit more frequently between campus and downtown might help with that as well.
I think Ex officio Bolland might have a response to that.
So I will say, that would probably be primarily a CyRide issue. You have four members of CyRide board here tonight that would be willing to talk to you about this, and we can bring it to the board meetings and follow up further, but I think that one has more to do with transit board than just council. Thank you, though.
Senator Azan.
So I do have a suggestion. So maybe reaching out to university departments, like ISSO office, to have more outreach and advertisement. I think it's mostly about the issue of advertisement and outreach. So typically, we get emails, I'm an international student as well, so we get emails from ISSO office on a daily basis, if you sign up for a newsletter. So having these events advertised through email by collaborating with university departments might help to increase outreach.
All right. So lastly on this topic, we'll hear from Senator Iono Dimhoff.
All right. So first of all, I do love the downtown of Ames. As an Al State student, I love to bring my parents there every time they come to visit, just to showcase it to them, because it's so beautiful. And then one event that's been popular for student engagement downtown is the farmer's market. That's very beautiful, and it's such a great event. However, one barrier that I personally have experienced is just available public parking down there. Have you heard any other concerns on this topic? And if so, are there any plans to accommodate?
Parking is an interesting conversation, and I think that that, actually, Ames Main Street, and in conjunction with the city, actually, Ames Main Street hired a consultant to do some downtown master planning and visioning. And so I think that council will be seeing something here within the next couple of months that kind of presents a synopsis of what input they gathered. And actually, we had a survey that went out, like over, almost 1,000 people participated in that, and I'm pleased to say, I think it was about over 200 students also provided feedback on that. So we'll see if parking is an issue. The biggest challenge is going to be, if you're going to build a parking garage, for sake of discussion, to add parking. You can't obviously add any more surface, because it's already taken up. Right now, one parking space in a structured parking ramp costs between $20,000 and $30,000 per parking space. So to build something that's 200, 300, you can all do the math, parking spaces, it gets extremely expensive. parking spaces, it gets extremely expensive. So the first question comes is, how are you going to pay for it, and then someone has to maintain it, you know, also. The, uh, parking ramp we have in Campus Town, uh, there was a Tiger grant, it was a federal grant that came in, I think at that time was like an eight, nine million dollar grant that helped pay for that. Um, so I'm not saying that that wouldn't be something that council may not consider. Um, at this point in time, it's not really on the, on the table, but appreciate, you know, the comment. And yes, there are times where I'm driving around, I got a meeting, you know, downtown, and it's, it is a challenge to find, you know, uh, parking spaces, especially if you have farmer's market, uh, and, and it's when it's in that really great weather, so do appreciate the comment, and I'm not trying to put you off, but there are some significant cost implications, and then how are we going to pay for it, and would it, would the, would the, um, taxpayers approve, uh, a bond issue for something that would be maybe fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty million dollars for a parking structure? So it's a, but I think it'll be probably part of the conversation over the, in the coming years.
Senator Jones, were you wishing to remove yourself from the role?
Motion to remove Senator Jones from the role to take a math exam.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, best of luck. All right, thank you all for the great discussion, for the sake of being able to get to all of our topics this evening. Now we'll have to move into the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability category, starting first with the topic of Resource Recovery, and I'm not sure if our Sustainability Committee wished to chime in or add any context, and if not, we'll open the floor straight for discussion.
Actually, um, I've asked, um, our Assistant City Manager, Brian Phillips, he's, uh, been working, um, a lot on the Resource Recovery Plant, and, uh, so maybe he could just, uh, offer some comments on, on where we're at, because, uh, it's a very complex, intricate situation, and then you can go on to, uh, questions.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, um, Ames and Story County are pretty unique, um, in how we handle solid waste disposal. We've had for nearly fifty years a Resource Recovery Facility, where we take all of the solid, municipal solid waste, and we process it, and remove metals, and recycle them, and then convert what's left, uh, into, uh, fuel for the power plant. And, uh, a portion that can't be converted into that then becomes landfilled. So as a result, we landfill a lot less than many communities. Um, the, the, uh, technology that was in use fifty years ago, and the economics of it have changed pretty dramatically since that time, and so we are likely headed towards, uh, in the next, uh, two to three years, no longer utilizing a Resource Recovery Facility, which means that we'll be, uh, looking to construct a, a facility where we, uh, take recyclable materials out, and then the remainder is landfilled. Um, it's a, it's a big change for our community, we're going to be asking people to become more active in recycling in order to get the material out before it gets into our facility, whereas right now, we can pull it out using magnets and non-ferrule metal recovery systems. So, we're working on that inform- that, that transition, uh, we'll know a little bit more about how that goes in the next couple of years.
All right, thank you very much. That will open the floor for discussion, starting with Senator Azan.
Uh, again, a suggestion might be, uh, it, it depends on convenience, right? So if it's convenient to someone, they're gonna recycle or incur, you know, students especially will, uh, prefer recycling. So I know Hy-Vee used to have this, like, you know, soda, uh, cans, and they stopped, like, collecting these. So is there any way City Council can encourage these local business, uh, owners to collaborate and partner, partner with City Council, or City of Ames, to actually encourage recycling? Is there like discussions going on along the lines? Because if I have to go to all the way to, you know, recycling, I probably would not do it, but if it's just Hy-Vee, and I'm just getting stuff there, I can just put my soda and get the money from there, you know, like recycle there too.
Yeah, um, so, part of, of, um, what you're talking about there is a dynamic of the, uh, bottle bill, right? The, the, um, redemption law that we have for containers of, uh, soda and, and things like that, sodas, beer, wine, uh, for, for bottles and, and cans. Um, and that has changed a lot in the last couple of years, and as a result, a lot of the grocery stores don't want to participate in that process anymore, they don't have to the way that they used to, and so they've kind of exited that, that process. We do have really good, um, partnerships with all, with nearly all the grocery stores in Story County, where we provide, um, yellow glass recycling bins, um, at those, uh, at those grocery stores, and if you bring container glass, uh, your glass bottles and cans and jars, your pickle jars and jelly jars and so forth, you can throw them in those bins after you rinse them out, and we'll recycle that. We, uh, we work with a, a company in Kansas City, and they'll recycle, they'll come up and they'll recycle them in Kansas City into Boulevard beer bottles, uh, and the glass that they can't recycle into that, they turn into, uh, fiberglass insulation. So those kinds of partnerships, I think we're going to continue to look for more opportunities like that, uh, to take specific materials and have consumers separate them out and drop them off. We've also added, in the downtown area, uh, and, uh, out by the Ice Arena, and then I believe out west on Mortenson, we have a couple of locations that we're, uh, continuing to expand out, where we, um, uh, allow for free drop-off of cardboard. So as you get your Amazon packages and so forth, you can take all that cardboard and stick it in those bins, and we'll recycle that. Uh, at the Resource Recovery Facility, on the outside, we have, uh, a glass recycling bin, a cardboard recycling bin, a mixed paper recycling bin, organics recycling, uh, uh, metals, uh, recycling bins, all of which is open twenty-four hours a day for anybody who wants to come by and drop it off, rather than paying their garbage hauler, uh, to, to haul it away. So those kinds of things, I know we're, we're at the, uh, kind of the infant stage of that right now, we're looking to expand more and more the places where we offer those kinds of programs, so that people have more convenient opportunities for it.
Awesome, so just to add one more, maybe having partnerships with, um, off-campus, like apartments, you know? Um, right now, I live in Raphael Avenue, and the, they don't have recycling bins at all. Uh, and it's pretty much similar across like different apartments, like, you know, neighboring buildings, there's no recycling bins, like for glass and all these containers. So, you know, if there's no bins, um, you know, most likely just people are gonna throw it in the regular trash, right?
Right.
So having these collaborations with like, you know, apartments, um, managers, so, yeah, that might increase more.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, is that sometimes you get, or at least I get myopic, and I think about, okay, here's what I do, I'll take food waste and cardboard and all this stuff, but I'm always driving around in a car, and someone made the comment about, well, how do we get to downtown? I think you did, you know, about just the CyRide is not necessarily, or someone, CyRide isn't very direct, and it's like, okay, John, wake up, no one's gonna put in their backpack, you know, food waste and, and other things and haul it down there. So then, like, I think the question, the bigger question comes, how can we make it accessible for all students, um, in the community, and you're right to the apartment, you know, but Brian, can you talk about, we're also looking at, maybe even how garbage collection and, and, uh, and recycling is being looked at, maybe that's what Bronwyn, maybe I stole your thunder, I'm sorry, but anyway, but that's, but we are, um, we are looking at, how can we make it even more easier? You're, you're absolutely right, if it's not easy, people are not going to do it. Uh, and that doesn't mean just students, that means anybody. So, uh, I think there are some, some things that we're looking at, maybe you can speak to that Bronwyn, or Brian can add to it, so.
I, I can try a little, and then Brian can add on if I miss anything, but I thi- I think another thing council is grappling with right now is whether we, uh, how we deal with recycling. So right now, we have a number of garbage haulers in Ames, and some offer recycling service and some don't. And it's up to whatever property owner to hire whatever garbage company they want, and so, again, some of those garbage companies don't offer that service. It, it is, um, possible that we could encourage or require anyone serving the City of Ames to at least offer recycling service for purchase, um, because right now, they don't all, there are probably about eight haulers, two of them offer recycling, of the eight. Um, and so those are questions we're grappling with, to like, to what level do we get involved in, um, in that market, and saying that, oh, people are going to, you know, garbage haulers might have to require or, or offer or require recycling. That would really change things, because some communities, um, I don't know where everyone is from, but a lot of communities do require that residents recycle, and they, some communities even require that residents compost, and Ames has never been that way, but, um, you know, I think we're evolving and looking at how we can evolve and keep the impacts reasonable for residents.
Is there any way to enforce? So right now, it seems like it's more like a volunteer thing than like enforcing the property managers to actually have this on a legislative level or like city level, you know, having this like enforcement done, that you should have, you know, property management should have like a trash can for recycling bins. Is there any way that we can enforce, or the city can enforce this to a property management?
Yeah, I'll let Brian think that.
Um, it may be, we'd have to look into that. Uh, I think, so part of it is, in Ames, because we've had the Resource Recovery System, um, historically, we've, we've relied on the fact that as people throw away even materials that in other communities would be separated out and recycled, uh, here, those materials, as they go into the garbage stream, will get separated out, recycled, or converted into power plant fuel. So we've been okay with, with the fact that they get thrown away, because we'll pull them out and use them for something else again. Um, in the future, we're not going to do that. Um, one of the other issues, uh, that's sort of an impediment to more recycling in the community right now, is the fact that we don't really have a facility locally to receive it. So as a garbage hauler goes and picks up, uh, recyclables from, uh, different households or different apartments, they don't have a convenient place to take it where it can then be processed and recycled. They have to haul it all the way down to Des Moines, and that's, um, not very economical in a garbage truck, right? So as we look to, uh, convert our Resource Recovery Facility into a facility that, uh, does some minimal processing and converts garbage into something that can more, be more easily landfilled, transported to a landfill, we're also looking to put in the infrastructure where we can receive recyclable materials from haulers, uh, where they can more easily offer those services to people, uh, on a voluntary basis, if that's the direction that the council wants to go, uh, and, uh, we can then find homes for that material, right? The appropriate market to then resell it, have it recycled, and give a new life. So we're going to try to create that opportunity that doesn't really exist right now in Story County on a significant scale.
All right, so we'll move over to Senator Agarwal, and so although we've touched on it a little bit, would happily include any topics related to promoting resources to students at this time, um, and after a couple of comments, unfortunately, we'll have to move on for the sake of expediency and respecting the council's time. So Senator Agarwal, this time's yours.
Um, I don't know what the statistics are on this, but as a college town, I would assume Ames generates a lot of e-waste. How do you guys deal with that?
I don't know if any of the council members want to answer. No, okay. Uh, we, I, I don't know if Ames generates more e-waste than other places. Um, I don't know that information, but I, I, I do know that, you know, just like any community, there is a significant amount of it. Um, so we, we have a couple of different things that we look for. One, um, there are some partnering organizations that we have listed on the city's website, so if you go to the city website, cityofames.org, and you go to the Resource Recovery page, um, for whatever material you have that you want to dispose of, uh, we have a listing of places that will take it. Uh, and if it's not listed on there, you can call the Resource Recovery staff, and they are experts at finding a new home for it. So they will help you out, um, make sure that it gets disposed of responsibly. Um, in, uh, I, I don't know what our current, uh, recycler situation is, but I know historically we've had, uh, different, um, different stores around town that would take, uh, e-waste and, um, and haul it back and have it recycled. Um, uh, Goodwill has from time to time taken e-waste, and they have a program where they can have it recycled. Um, the, uh, the big issue for us is lithium batteries, because they're everywhere, and , uh, they, when they go through our equipment, uh, they have a tendency to catch on fire. Um, so, uh, lithium batteries, uh, as people have those in their devices, and, uh, even if you can't remove them from the device, if your device is dead, but it has a lithium battery in it, uh, generally, you can take that to Resource Recovery, and we will recycle it responsibly. But those things are everywhere, but we also want you to think about things like, uh, do I really need this, this, uh, uh, greeting card that plays, uh, uh, music when you open it, uh, or not? Because as you buy that, you're going to get a lithium battery with it that is going to have to be disposed of. Um, so think about the choices that you make as you purchase the materials, because we also have to dispose of it. Um, uh, there are a couple of other, um, programs that we offer, one big one that I, hopefully you're all familiar with, is Rummage Rampage. Uh, we take in a lot of materials of a variety of different types, including a lot of electronics that can be rehomed, uh, through that, uh, program in the summer, uh, and, and that helps us cut down on the amount of electronic waste that we have, uh, to dispose of, so.
All right, thank you very much, and so if we can briefly have Senator K. Coon and Vice Speaker personally add other questions, just very briefly, and then we'll end with some comments from our Sustainability Committee.
Okay, I want to point out, uh, two points. First is on separation of solid waste, and the second one is on the use of plastic waste. Based on my observation, I think my very first surprise, would I say here in the U.S. or in Ames, is seeing that there's no effective strategy for separation of solid waste, be it, uh, plastic, organic waste, uh, paper, or metals. Everything is just being kept all together. I don't know if maybe it's, uh, Wyleve, which is actually school facility, and even on campus here, the, the recycling facilities have seen, it takes up everything. And, you, you talked about, uh, waste separation facilities, I don't know the effectiveness of that, but in solid waste recovery, I think it all starts from where this waste is being generated from. So I don't know what, if there are plans to have effective means or to enforce that in which individuals at homes, and even, let me say, the waste dumps or so, there are clear separations for organic waste, for, uh, plastic waste, and others. I think that would be very helpful, but if there are plans for that, you could share. Then secondly, on the use of plastics, especially, I would want to point out of plastic bags, that's one of my observations too, because this relates very, very much to the environment and sustainability, which I care very much about too. Uh, it's kind of on statistics that eighty-five percent of marine waste actually comes from, uh, plastic. If I should take a walk to Walmart now, I can bet you I might come out with about fifteen bags of, fifteen plastic bags. It's that serious. And I know a cabinet in my home in which almost everything is filled with plastic bags. I, I'm not sure I've been to anywhere else in which I've seen such use of plastic bags, maybe it's, might be unique to the U.S., I don't know. Yeah, but there could be better options for that. Uh, I've been elsewhere in Europe where you have to pay for plastic bags if you want them. If such could be implemented here, I think it would be very helpful. Also, the use of paper bags could also, uh, be very much helpful, but any comment on that would be appreciated.
Yeah, with regard to the separation of, of plastic waste and food waste, we want to encourage people to do that more and more. Um, we offer those, uh, we offer that as an option, um, at our facilities, uh, right? So if you go to the Resource Recovery Facility, you can drop off plastic waste that's separated, and we will make sure that it gets recycled appropriately. Uh, same with food waste, we have food waste, uh, food waste diversion program. Um, Iowa State on campus here has a really excellent, uh, food waste diversion, a, a composting program, uh, that, uh, is very involved with all the dining facilities. We do want to encourage, uh, that stuff to get to the right place, rather than being we do want to encourage uh that stuff to get to the right place rather than being co-mingled because once it's all together, it's harder to get it apart, right, and to the right place. Um, so that's that's the transition that we are going to be making more and more here in the next couple of years. And then with regard to the plastic bags, um, I think, you know, we um, we encourage the use of of reusable bags. Uh, that's, we give out a lot of reusable bags to people um through promotions that we have. Unfortunately, uh, in Iowa, cities are not allowed under state law to regulate the use of plastic bags. So it would not be lawful for the City of Ames to adopt an ordinance that says uh grocery stores have to charge for plastic bags or may not use plastic bags. Um, that's that's um state law specific, so.
I think, as you probably may be aware, a lot of the grocery stores have places where you can actually bring plastic bags, deposit them, and they do recycle them. So that's, you know, one, I think it becomes, it's coming about each individual to try and be aware of what they're doing with it. And then the plastic bags that did get in, that are thrown into uh our um, in the garbage, they're light enough, they do get burnt, you know, in the uh, in the production of uh electricity as well, too. But do appreciate your observations. We understand that's it's a big problem. Plastic bags, you know, in the, in marine, in marine life as well, too. Uh, it's it's a, it's a big issue, but I think it's going to take each one of us to be responsible and try and either use reusable bags or try and focus on uh recycling them or making sure they're not getting, blowing around in the trees as we're starting to see right now. As the leaves fall down, you see more and more bags on the streets.
All right. Very briefly, we'll move over to Vice Speaker Persley.
Yes, so I would um like to acknowledge that Ames has a really strong uh climate action plan, and I applaud them for that. I want to know what uh switching from the Resource Recovery Plant in the future is going to do to impact that climate action plan because I know uh there were goals of an eighty-three percent reduction in carbon emissions by twenty thirty. I am, I'm just curious how that is going to hinder those plans.
Let me just, I could summarize it very quickly, is that really starting to reduce Resource Recovery Plant, we're actually going to try and be buying more and more power off the grid, and we're trying to increase our purchase of power from uh wind and solar. So we're really trying to work towards that end. We already do have contracts for wind, and uh we have our own solar farm, which is not very big, it's about two megawatt, but the point is uh trying to increase that footprint um also. And uh, the other thing is, is that by reducing or eliminating Resource Recovery, we actually have to burn, we have to burn gas to burn the trash. And so by able to, if we don't have to handle or burn the trash, then we're going to produce less um um greenhouse gases and try and take advantage of what's available on the grid or if we uh increase our solar farms ourselves.
Awesome. If you had something to add on, please feel free.
Yeah, the other thing I would say is that Brian mentioned the fact that we may have to have haulers taking recyclables elsewhere. And so one of the components here is a question of which is going to have the biggest negative impact, having those trucks on the road at long distances or trying to deal with things at home with a shift in Resource Recovery. And that's, we're wrestling with that now because we know how much um the carbon footprint is increased by making those big trucks travel long distances hauling our waste. The other thing I would say is that um the Climate Action Plan has as one of its main components, education, and trying to educate people about how their choices impact the waste stream and how they can reduce, reuse, recycle. So all of these things that people are asking about require that kind of education. And again, I'm going to say you all are in a great position to help us educate about the need to not purchase the greeting cards that Brian mentioned that have lithium batteries in them, or trying to bring your own bags when you go shop at Walmart or wherever. That word needs to get out, and again, peer pressure sometimes is a pretty potent educational tool. And so we would appreciate any help that you could give us.
All right. Well, I want to thank you all very much for the great conversation. And for just a moment here, I'll yield the floor over to Ex officio Boland.
Thank you guys all for being so interested in this topic. I'm sure our Sustainability Committee really appreciates that. Regarding options for resources of, for education and all of the other things regarding sustainability, our student government website, redesign, has done a great job of opening up uh accessible information with both, from both the City of Ames and the university regarding any resources you would need for figuring out where trash would go or determining any questions you might have regarding um waste in Ames. And they also have a great open line of communication with our, with the Ames, the City of Ames Sustainability Coordinator. And so any further questions on this topic, I think we can bring to the Sustainability Committee, and also to me, if you would like to open up a line of communication with the Sustainability Coordinator, I would be happy to do that. But given our time constraints, I think it might be, we might have to move on a little bit.
All right. Again, I want to thank you all for the great conversation. Like Ex officio Boland was mentioning, for the sake of time, we'll now have to move on to parking and citations. So if we can add any brief comments that we have on that category, after which we'll wrap up tonight's evening. So if anyone has any comments related to parking or citations, now is the time. And so if you wish to say something first, you're welcome to. I can open it up.
I think there was a question. I'm going to try and answer it real quick.
Okay, perfect.
Can I complain about getting a parking ticket on campus? Just, just kidding. You'll double it.
So my understanding was there was a question about uh expanding the um enhanced penalty parking tickets uh past just the home football games. So we did pass an ordinance that allowed the city to add to uh beyond, again, just home football games. Uh, we haven't done it yet, so we haven't asked for that to happen yet. It is a possibility. The reason that we were looking at it was when Cy Town, I think, gets built out completely, and they may start having more events or more concerts at the stadium, there may be a need uh to try and discourage illegal parking during those bigger events uh which are similar in scale to football games. So that was kind of the concept behind it. Again, we haven't used it yet. If we were to get to the point where we think we have an event that would warrant that, then we would do the same thing that we do around football. We would use social media. Hopefully, the university would help get that word out, especially if it was a kind of a university event, um, to uh, you know, our goal is not to cite people, right? We want people just to follow the law. And currently, to get a ticket in that area, you have to be parked illegally in the first place. So it's an enhanced penalty for something that was already a um a violation. So as long as you're parked legally, you wouldn't see that enhanced penalty ticket anyway. So I think that's what uh you guys wanted me to speak to. Hopefully, that was it. If you have other questions about parking, I might be able to answer them.
Senator Gopala.
So we, uh, at Student Government, we just initiate, we just started a pilot program for parking payback by volunteering at the local food pantry, our campuses. Are you guys at city council or the police department thinking about doing it where resident, residents or students with parking tickets in Ames can like pay off their parking ticket by working at, like volunteering at the library for a couple hours or a food pantry in on, in town, something like that?
It's a good question for our policymakers.
I'm actually taking some notes on the action items and things to consider, so I just wrote that down in terms of, that I think would have to be an ordinance change. But uh, not that that couldn't be considered, but it's an interesting suggestion, and it also would encourage students to be involved and open up their horizons. But I think right now, that corrects you, you'd actually have to have an ordinance change because right now, if you get a ticket, you have to.
Yeah, just so you understand, all we're trying to do with tickets, we're trying to accomplish two things with tickets. Trying, first of all, promote uh turnover sometimes in the downtown and the campus town. So somebody can't park there all day and then block an opportunity for someone else to come in and use that uh adjacent facility, right? And the others are just safety issues. Sometimes you're parking across the driveway or a sidewalk. And uh, I can assure you, I don't think it's always understood, we're just trying to collect enough money to cover the cost of enforcement. And we could do away, and the city council by policy could do away with all parking enforcement. As long as they do away with all the expenditures that goes along with it, there'd be no problem. But many times, people want us to do away with the parking enforcement, I mean, the the uh, the fines and the and the fees, you know, the the meter fees, and also the fines, and still have us have all the associated expenditures. That's a difficult equation for us. So we don't try to generate any excess revenue. Uh, we have relatively cheap, cheap fines right now for parking if you compare to other cities, and we have. We're certainly not to the maximum of other cities do, uh, have enforced. So it's going to be difficult for us to operate um without generating enough revenue. That would be, property taxes would have to go up. And that's going to be a difficult time, just like the university's facing, you all are facing, in student fees and tuition, don't want your tuition, do not want your tuition to be raised. And you're, you're, you're paying taxes, too, if you live in a apartment, whether you know or not, it's being charged through your rent. We're going to have to then increase our property taxes to subsidize the parking system. So it's a difficult balance that the council has to deal with all the time. So it'd be difficult to to waive parking fees because then we'd have to, uh, excuse me, fines, or let you volunteer not to pay them. Then we'd have to raise the fees, could go up to two dollars, or the meter fees go up to two dollars an hour, our property taxes would go up. So I hope you can appreciate the dilemma the council's in.
All right. Councilwoman Betcher, and then we'll end this category with Senator Azan.
So uh, the the short answer to that question is council has not discussed that kind of um volunteer in place of the fine. But we have been aware of that kind of program elsewhere uh from our attendance at the National League of Cities Convention, and we are also conscious of balancing the the need, as Mr. Shanker has mentioned, against the unintended consequences of fines that that may not be affordable to certain economic groups like poor students. Um, so those are parts of our discussions as we consider things like the the game day and event parking. Um, the other thing I would say is my best advice to any of you is don't park illegally. Um, and I get tickets, the mayor gets tickets, we all get tickets if we park illegally. And in the south campus neighborhood where we have those issues with the game day parking, there are times when emergency vehicles cannot get down the streets because cars are parked on both sides. And if you were somebody who lived in that neighborhood who had a heart attack and needed an emergency vehicle to get through, you would want the ability to fine and tow in situations like that. And I, I'm a big believer in community safety, so.
All right. And then closing out with Senator Azan.
Uh, so my question is regarding the event. So I know there are signs uh which says increase in fine for an event, but the concern is most of the student, especially graduate students, are not aware of there is an event going on, first of all. You know, the football game, they are not into, they have like a lot going on. So they don't keep up with like all these like different events that is happening in town, right? Campus town or City of Ames. Uh, so I know, like personally, a couple of grad students, they they park on the right, wrong side of the street. It was a street parking, but they park on the wrong side. And they were chilling in this apartment. And then they got like huge fine just because it was, there was an event going on. Um, I don't know, football game, I don't remember all these details. But the major concern is maybe thinking about along the lines, how to advertise, you know, like these spots, uh, that there's an event going on, you know, uh, because that's something that is not a common knowledge for most of the graduate students, especially undergrads. They know there's a football game going on Saturday, you know, all these other events. But for grad students, it's not a common knowledge to get to know about like all these different events. I agree with you um um that, first of all, not illegal parking is the most important thing. If you park illegally, you will get fined. But most of the students are, you know, they're broke, and they don't have money to pay like hundreds of dollars to, you know, get out of these situations. But things happen, life happens, so with that, I you.
Oh, maybe it would be helpful, too, if you could give us suggestions about where students are getting this kind of information. Because I I think we've seen a much more fragmented media than we've ever had. So where we used to be able to to go to the Ames Tribune and KASI, that would hit almost everybody. Now, I don't know that that hits a lot of people. So where could we better advertise so that uh we make sure that you get that information? So I know, we we advertise it all on our social media whenever uh there's things like that. I want to give a quick reminder that it's going to snow soon. Snow route will be coming up, so make sure that you're following us on social media because we will always advertise on there, plus a lot of other sources when the snow route might go into effect. Because we don't like to tow vehicles for being parked on the snow routes. We hate doing it. But it's necessary to be able to get the streets plowed. So make sure that you are uh kind of reaching out, follow us on X or Instagram or Facebook, and you'll see those.
Uh, my suggestion would be to reach out to departments, um, you know, like ISSO Office for International Students, that's the best way to get information out there. Uh, MSA Office on campus for undergrad students, GPS as well, uh, just which is a graduate student body, they send out emails. So reaching out to these like um student organization or departments might help to spread the word out. Because you you get emails, I'm not saying that every student will read all of these, but at least some portion of them will read it, and that might improve the, you know, the overall.
Could I ask you to email to Emily?
Yes.
A list of the organizations, a contact person, a phone number, and whatever, that would be helpful. That's one of my action items on my list because it's a number of things related to that. Because we're not that familiar, so that's probably one of the gaps that does exist. It'd be really helpful to try and, because we want to improve the communication flow between uh everybody here on on campus as well as the city.
Awesome. I will do that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Rollins.
Okay, it worked. Um, I was just going to add to that, that if you go to cityofames.org, our new website, as soon as you go there, there's a pop-up where you can put in your email address, and you will start to get all those notifications, everything from which streets are being worked on to um when fines are going to be in place. And so visit cityofames.org, and includes your email address, and you'll start to get that information.
That's a great point. We probably could try and get that information via
Email.
What you're going to send to Emily, let them know to encourage that so we can get that out.
Yeah, and everyone can sign up, so it's one-time thing, and then they start receiving. Awesome.
All right. So lastly on this topic is Ex officio Boland.
I just wanted to address like awareness on the increased fines or anything like that. When we had the first weekend of school cyclone welcome weekend, we do have those ordinances that increase um the parking fines and the immediate towing. And we had those big green signs all over the place in that area that would let you know, hey, your car's going to get towed if you park illegally, and you're not going to get a notice. So maybe we could discuss that on council, is, we could put up another sign, just those temporary ones for events and the similar things. But that was a good question. Thank you.
Well, I'll say, I can just see Chief Huff just going, there's a lot of manpower, there's a lot of manpower involved in terms of putting those signs up and taking them down. So um, but I think, I think letting people know via emails or whatever, getting that kind of, let's try that first. But uh, it's, there's a lot of police manpower that goes in to putting those signs up, so.
All right. Senator Pettisani, I do apologize, we're a bit over time here, and so we're going to make a slight amendment to the agenda here. Unfortunately, we're not going to have time for open discussion. We want to make sure we're respectful of council's time, who have been here a little bit longer than they were expecting to be. But what we really want to do is encourage all of you to send Emily, like she was talking about, send Ex officio Boland any questions you might have. And so obviously, we don't want tonight to be the end of the dynamic and the conversation with city council. So if you have questions, please get those sent over. We'll make sure you get an answer. And in the same spirit, if you're here with the city council, if you're representing the city, and you have something you'd like student input on that we weren't able to get to tonight, or of any sort of way that we could collaborate, in the same way, please uh work with Emily. We'd love to have those conversations. And so before we adjourn for tonight, I would entertain um any final comments from either Ex officio Boland or Mayor Hala.
I think Quinn did a great job of summing that up. Um, I'm your main source of communication with the city. I'm here to help you guys, and I'm here to help them with that open line of communication. I'm always I'm always willing to set you up with any contacts or any of that with our executive leadership or anyone who would like to discuss things. I'm here for you, and I think Quinn did a nice job of summing that up. I appreciate council being here tonight. I think it was a really productive meeting. We had council and mayor and city manager and assistant city manager, as well as our two chiefs of police here. So I'm really appreciative of the turnout we had for this meeting, and I'd just like to thank all of them again.
Well, you've given us two hours of your time, and I don't want you to think that it was just tit chat and nothing's going to happen. So I want you to know what I wrote down. I'm not going to guarantee that any of these are going to get implemented, but I think there are things that are worth pursuing. First is improving communication between Ames Main Street and the international students and actually the community, I mean, the university community in general. So it may already exist, but we're going to try and look at that. Two is the barrier in parking in downtown. I can't guarantee that anything can be done, but it was noted. I think it's a good point on the, you know, how do we get more recycled bins in apartments, students, you know, access to that? I think that's a good, good point. It's a very complex issue and not a simple answer. Adding more festivals in downtown, you're going to email, this young lady next to Gloria, you're going to email Emily with some ideas, you know, on that. And honestly, if you're interested in that, let Emily know because we're looking, we're going to need volunteers. Anyone brings up an idea, you can count on the fact that you're going to be expected to help accomplish that. Because the point is, is that being violent told is not, doesn't work real well. So people are busy, so. Transportation from and to, to and from downtown. Cyright, I think that Brahman and others members heard that. I think it's a very, potentially a very expensive and intricate situation, but I think it'll be at least considered. But I like the idea of the dinky, and for those that may not be aware, dinky actually was what helped connect Ames and the university around the turn of the century because it was actually two different locations that was geographically separated by a lot of muddy roads essentially. And so that kind of helped bring the two communities together, so the dinky was a little streetcar. Volunteer in exchange for parking, interesting question, not sure where they might go, what's looking at. And then how can we better communicate with grad students on events that are going on with the increased fine amount? I think that that maybe is already, Councilwoman Rollins had a good point about just, you know, signing up for that, that's one thing. But we'll try and get more communication via Emily and vice versa. So that's what I have, and thank you again for inviting us. We really appreciate, I think it was a really good, good conversation, great questions, and look forward to seeing you again, you know, in the spring. And if I have one, Rachel, you didn't say anything, and Tim, you didn't have a chance to say anything, do you have anything you want to just offer as an input everyone else had a chance to kind of jump in? And I kind of dominated the conversation.
Sure, yeah. The one thing I always talk to students about when I was campaigning is what's one thing you'd like improved or changed in Ames? And I want to hear your response first. I don't want to be the one leading with an idea. I really want to get those ideas from you, the people that we represent. And so my inbox is always open, I'm always happy to meet and listen to that. And I'm very interested especially in what we can do as a city that would make young people want to stay in our community after we graduate. So that's what I did, I graduated from Iowa State, I took a job here. Ames is my home, and I want to look at options that Ames has for retaining more of our young professionals in the community. So especially if there's something in a community you're looking at elsewhere, or a hometown, or, you know, something that we can do as a city to improve on that issue, I want to hear it. So, thank you.
So Thanksgiving is coming up, so I want to say to the senators here, thank you for your service. There's other things you could do, and you're trying to find a way to make the world a better place. And so thank you for your service. Does it seem like it's been a long time since we've had a break? I mean, it's been a big push to get to Thanksgiving, so I hope everyone has just a really wonderful time with family and friends over Thanksgiving break, and have a good finals. Thanks for your service tonight.
All right. So with that, once again, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor Hala, city councilors, both of our police chiefs, our city manager and assistant city manager, thank you all for being here, we really do appreciate your time. It was an honor to host you this evening. I want to remind senators that we'll be reconvening at 7:10 to consider our business for this evening, so please get up, you know, have at least a little bit of a break to stretch your legs and grab some water. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from our speaker.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we'll adjourn until 7:10, thank you all.
Hopefully found that interesting and important.
There's always a lot of content that we have to cover and not a lot of time.
I'll give you the name.
Okay. If anything, right? Okay, I'll mark you. Yeah, I can go ahead and mark you down.
Okay.
Thanks very much for the help. Thanks for doing this.
Really appreciate it.
I do have it, yeah. So, a funding bill, putting some people on committees, bunch of new business. Um, one resolution that could be a little interesting about this.
The resolution is the, uh... Oh, just, uh, you got them to make it a little bit more of an appreciation for what the administration's doing to protect the AI instead of criticizing the state.
So, shifting focus a little bit, but it's still on. Like, amendments haven't been made yet, so we'll have to actually, like, change the title and stuff and get through it. So, hopefully that makes it smooth.
Yeah, and it's been helpful, I can hope, too, to get things done. Whenever it seems like it's going to be applicable or even fair, I'll work on that. Yeah. Getting all the way around it, that's good.
Good.
Well...
Other than that, it's pretty good, so...
What, you're banning me now, and I was not able to say this?
Uh, I know, I know. Yeah, that was done. Now, you get things, don't you? But if you have to leave, just tell me and I will. Because I... Yeah, and just remove yourself in a roll, um, yeah. Because I know people have stuff to do. We can be a little flexible tonight. That, at least thirty would be nice, having that. But that's also, also whenever I think time's going to break it long, whenever I think it's long, it's like, so soon, no idea. Wait, why is it time, that's what I'm asking. I mean, because I didn't do that, and I didn't, I mean, that's all that. Okay, I hope it has.
Hey, everyone, if we can find our way back to our seats here, we'll get started in just a moment.
Bylaws then, great. That makes life easier. Yeah, that's fair. I think in fact, really, there should be a law for you, but if it doesn't, oh, no bylaws, you can't have that. Because it wouldn't, because it would probably come in a mess, you know what I mean? So, it would make sense to kind of have the ability to say, you get to do it, it's made for you. Yeah, but I feel so excited. Thank you, Alex. Please, Doc.
All right, everyone, welcome back. Hopefully, you found the Joint City Council meeting to be interesting and informative. Really appreciate you all staying a little bit longer to knock out some of our business items for this week. So, with that, the time is seven eighteen, eighteen PM, and I hereby call this meeting of the Student Senate to order. As always, we'll start with a roll call. When I call your name, please say "here" or "present." Aiono Dimha. Rahman. Rolls. Reinhardt. Marcus. Jones. Right. Excused. Pelzer. O'Connor. Palin. Waisango. Nivenhoven. Azan. Kamire. Pettasani. Hartley. Agarwal. Shamsaei. Veriger. Gopa. Snyder. I'm going to take that as a "here" or "present." Momine. Nandl. James. Bailey. Johnson. Dugan. Neil. Sloop. Persley. And Cronin. With that, we do have quorum for the evening. We'll move next to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Speaker Persley. Seeing no Senate program for this evening, we'll move directly into open forum. Open forum shall serve as an opportunity for students to speak about any issues relevant to the student body. If anyone is here tonight for open forum, I would ask that you approach the podium at this time, and I would ask that senators close, or mostly close, their laptops as a sign of respect to tonight's speakers. With that, the floor is yours.
Hello, everybody. So, myself and the Rules Committee have gathered before you because we have a gift, a holiday gift, if you will, in the form of our completed baby bylaws. So, um... I think we're all very excited. We spent the whole semester producing them for you all. Hopefully, nobody cried about them. I think we almost did last Rules meeting, but it was fine. We figured it out. I think they went well, and we're very excited to have condensed the sixty-six pages of the bylaws, as well as the seven or eight pages of our Constitution into less than twenty pages for y'all, for you all, including five pages of Table of Contents. So, please give it a look. I'm going to let the rest of the Rules Committee talk about the process and some interesting things that they found while condensing our bylaws.
Somebody go next. You go. Um, I think that this was really an important project, and I'm looking forward to how it's going to help new senators understand the bylaws easier, especially while they're just coming into student government. I know that it can be a big thing to see this large stack of bylaws, and I'm hoping that this will be helpful to all the new senators.
I'll kind of echo that as well. As someone who was interested in our bylaws and rules in the first place, I think making our rules in sort of a more condensed, easy, more easily approachable format, so more people can read them and understand them, I think is really important. And I kind of did our, I don't know if it's the largest chapter, chapter two?
I think you did the largest.
Yeah. Pretty much all the rules with our legislative branch. So, I feel like I know that like the back of my hand. And I feel like most of us can say we see the bylaws in our sleep now, so...
I kind of joined Rules Committee to, with the idea of being a part of the baby bylaws project, and that was one of the biggest things that drew me to Rules, especially after writing the bylaws and Constitution for my Hall Council last year. So, being a part of this was kind of great. Hopefully, you guys are very grateful for this because as we, as we can all, we can all attest to this. We do not want to see the bylaws and Constitution in our sleep. We do see it, but here, here we are. And after writing the, one of the chapters on finances, I think I know finances way too well, to the point maybe COA might be afraid of me. But, yeah.
Basically, to re-say everything that they've all just said, I really enjoyed being part of this project, and I feel like I know way more about the bylaws than I obviously did before, and I really appreciate that experience, especially Election Commission. It's very interesting, and I was fortunate enough to summarize that chapter. So, we're very excited to present this to you all, and we hope you enjoy it as much as we did.
And then also, we'll have these copies available to you in the office in the folder where you find the normal bylaws, so, yeah.
I'll just close out by saying that I am immensely proud of the Rules Committee that we have this semester. I would like to say that they worked so efficiently. I think I asked a lot of them to go through in one semester our whole bylaws on top of all of their coursework. So, thank you all. And I really hope that it is more welcoming, welcoming to our new senators to have something that's not so daunting and is more so on the cute side. It's still a little, you know, a bit of a read, but it's nothing compared to the actual documents. And so, I just want to say, um, thank you all to the Rules Committee, and thank you all for allowing me to be in the position that I am to have produced and help produce the baby bylaws.
All right, thank you all for the great work that you've done as Rules Committee this year. We really do appreciate it. So, if that is anyone else here tonight for open forum. Seeing no other students here for open forum, we'll move into adopting this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to do so? Do you wish to state the nature of your objection? All right, technically, I don't believe I heard a second on motion to adopt anyways. So, if you wish to go ahead and motion add something to the agenda, that would be in order. To the bottom of New Business? There's been a motion to add item zero-three-one-F to the bottom of New Business. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, are there any objections?
Objection?
If any combination of you wish to state the nature of those objections, you may.
Um, I sent that bill to PR, and they tabled it indefinitely. Senator Gopa, if you would like to have that bill back on the agenda, it needs to be in the form of a new finance bill, not the previous one that was tabled.
All right, and so, our speaker stated the nature of her objection, and so, I'll give either of you the opportunity to withdraw. All right, any further amendments to tonight's agenda? Senator Kamire, we'll work our way around here.
A motion to amend the, the agenda to add twenty-twenty-four-dash-two-dash-zero-three-seven, funding Jingle Jog posters for first-year council.
Uh, it's been moved to add item zero-three-seven-F to the bottom of New Business. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, are there any objections to that amendment? Seeing none, it shall be made. We're now back on the agenda as a whole with Senator Pettasani. All right, moved and seconded, I believe you said adding item zero-four-six-SG, is that correct? All right, moved and seconded to add item zero-four-six-SG to tonight's agenda. Are there any objections to doing so? Do you wish to state the nature of that objection?
Uh, this is also a question. Has this bill gone through Rules Committee yet?
Seating bill?
It would require waiving a bylaw.
It has not.
Okay, thank you.
Do you wish to state which bylaw that would require waiving?
Uh, the committee requirement for number of committees you can be seated on as a senator.
All right, so I'll give either of you the opportunity to withdraw. And if you don't, then we'll enter discussion on whether or not to add this item to tonight's agenda. All right, with that, the floor is open. If there are no questions or comments, we'll vote immediately on whether or not to add this to the agenda. All right, are there any objections to ending debate? Seeing no objections, we'll move into a vote. Pardon? Uh, we would be discussing, I believe it was zero-four-six-SG was the item, Senator Pettasani, whether or not to add item zero-four-six-SG, which is a seating bill, to tonight's agenda.
And there was an objection not to add this, right? Because it required bylaw waived.
That's correct.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Vice Speaker Persley, did you have any discussion on this?
I... I have discussion on something else. Uh, we have two zero-three-seven-Fs. I think we need to change the numbering for that.
All right, we can come back with a friendly just a second once we vote on whether or not to add this to tonight's agenda. Senator Zahn, was it about the addition of this bill?
Yeah, so I just want to add, if it required, um, bylaw wave, I think it's better to just table it for now, and, you know, Rules Committee can look into this bill, and then we can add this bill into the agenda next time. So, that's just my, um, comment on this. So, there's nothing, no need to hurry. Thanksgiving is coming up. After Thanksgiving, after discussing in Rules, if it passed in Rules, we can add this bill in Agenda, and then we can vote on.
Speaker Momine.
I just want to add a little bit of context for everybody. Um, I was going to give it in my Rules announcement, but Rules will not be meeting tomorrow. We just finished the baby bylaws. It's two days before break. I want to give everybody a chance to just, like, relax and prepare for break. So, we won't be meeting, and that means that our next meeting will be December fifth, which is after our last Senate meeting of the session. So, Rules will not have a chance to review this bill. Bylaw waves do not have to go through Rules. At the end of the day, the bylaw wave is up to Senate to accept it or not. I don't know if any members of Rules feel strongly against waiving the bylaw for a committee seat for Pettasani. Uh, we've already done it once. I don't know how Pettasani does all the things that he does, but he does them. So, uh, that's kind of all I have on the Rules part of it. We won't be meeting before the end of this session in regards to looking at this bill. My take is that I, I have no, no concern about Pettasani's ability to sit on another committee. And he already attends the meetings, from what I understand. Yeah, so, that's kind of my piece.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none without objection, we'll move into a vote on whether or not to add item zero-four-six-SG to tonight's agenda. Unless there are strong feelings, I'm going to do this as a placard vote. So, as a reminder of voting yes, pardon? All right, roll call's been called for, so I'll move into a roll call vote on that. Um, but just as a reminder, this would be, it was an objection. Yeah, that's right, it was an objection. So, voting yes would mean adding it to the agenda. Voting no would be not adding it to the agenda. Uh, and of course, you may abstain. So, I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page about that one. So, with that, it's been moved for a roll call vote. When I call your name, please say yes, no, or you may abstain. Aiono Dimha. Rahman. Rolls. Reinhardt. Marcus. Pelzer. O'Connor. Palin. Waisango. Nivenhoven. Azan. Kamire. Pettasani. Hartley. Um, Agarwal. Shamsaei. Veriger. Gopa. Snyder. Momine. Nandl. James. Bailey. Johnson. Neil. Sloop. Persley. And Cronin. One moment. All right, and so with the vote, final vote of twenty-seven to one to zero, the amendment does carry, and item zero-four-six-SG will be included on tonight's agenda. With that, we're now back on the agenda as a whole with Vice Speaker Persley. Yes, I didn't, didn't catch you, so I'll do Vice Speaker Persley, and we'll move over to you, Senator. Is there a second? With no second, we'll move over then to Vice Speaker Persley. Do you wish to state the nature of your objection?
Microphone, please?
Uh, yes, if you could grab the microphone, that would be great, thank you.
I feel like this bill has already gone through the needed platforms that it should have gone to, and it has failed. And I just don't see the point on having discussion again on this topic when we have more important matters that we can probably get to.
All right, and this was item zero-three-one-F, if I'm not mistaken?
Three-nine-F.
Three-nine-F?
Yes.
Understood. All right, I'll give either of you the opportunity to withdraw. If neither of you do, we'll go through the same thing we just went through, discuss, and then vote on whether or not to add zero-three-nine-F to tonight's agenda.
How many of y'all have an exam today?
So, I'm going to take that as you not withdrawing?
No, not yet. How many of y'all have an exam tomorrow or on Friday that you need to study?
Well, I'll give either of you the opportunity to withdraw. If neither of you do, we'll open discussion. All right, so if neither of you do, then Senator Gopa, please go ahead.
I will withdraw if a lot of you have an exam to study for in the next two days. Raise your hands. Okay, it's not worth the discussion, we'll do it later. I withdraw.
Withdrawn. Vice Speaker Persley.
Um, I would like to propose a friendly amendment to change the numbering of funding Jingle Jog to twenty-seven. Jog to 2024-2-038F.
All right, moved and accepted. Are there any further amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, are there any objections to this agenda? Seeing none, it shall be adopted? And we'll move in then to adopting the previous minutes. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, to adopt the previous minutes, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, they shall be adopted. And with that, we'll move straight into committee reports, starting with Speaker Momine and the Rules Committee.
Well, I think you already heard a lot from Rules tonight. Just want to say thank you to the Rules Committee again, and our next project is just going to be a deep dive into the bylaws, so that's all I got.
With that, are there any questions for the Rules Committee? Seeing no questions for the Rules Committee, we'll move over to Finance.
Good evening, all. Not much for me tonight. You guys will see about seven bills on first read, and then you will also see, you'll be voting on one bill tonight, and that's the Trend Magazine bill. We had a lot of really good discussion about this bill in Finance, so please look at it closely. Thank you.
Would help if I turn the microphone on. There's been a motion to remove Senator Gopah from the roll. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections, he shall be removed. So with that, the floor is open for any questions or comments for the Finance Committee. Seeing neither, we'll move over to PR.
Got quite a bit for PR tonight. For marketing, they've been going over brand guidelines for our social media brand redesign. Our first podcast episode has been recorded, and that's currently in development. We officially have a brand new camera that we're proud, yep, Jake. Yeah, round of applause. Jake's the most excited. We're hoping to collaborate with ISU Athletics and the ISU Director of Marketing for future projects. For IT, sustainability and IDEA Committee tabs on the website are now complete. We're currently working on the PR page and plan to create a page for the Election Commission. We plan to expand each committee's page to include details about their projects, what they do, and we plan to take pictures of all the committees to display on the website as well. The homepage, if you haven't checked this out, I would. The homepage now has a new video reel made up of footage from myself, Alex, and Chase. In terms of outreach, we had a great turnout for the wrestling meet last week. It was really cool to see the student government spotlighted on the Gemma Tron. All outreach credits are up to date in the MIS. Other than our new Director of Academic Affairs, the Cabinet has completed all required outreach credits. Round of applause. I'm aware, senators, there are some of you have yet to complete your outreach credits. Speaker Momine has contacted you about that. I've been talking with the Sustainability Committee about projects they're working on. That'll count for outreach credit if you want to help them with that. I will also offer you guys the opportunity to speak to clubs or classes about student government to earn last minute credits. Please note that if you're a senator who was seated halfway through the semester, you are only required one outreach credit, and if you were seated in the last three weeks, so anybody seated tonight is exempt from outreach credits. They have nothing to worry about. Please reach out to me if you have any questions. We have a lot of big things planned for next semester in terms of outreach, so stay tuned.
Are there any questions or comments for the PR Committee? Seeing none, we'll move over to the IDEA Committee.
Hi, not a lot of updates. We went over some of our upcoming and ongoing projects at length during our meeting today. It's pretty fun, and then we also have a new senator and a new ad laur joining us today.
Are there any questions for IDEA? Seeing none, we'll move on to events.
Hey, hi, you guys. I hope you all are really hungry after the long meeting because we do have a wonderful potluck coming up. I baked a 20-pound turkey, so please come eat food. I'm actually pleading and begging on my knees. We also will have the little thankful cards that we're doing, so if you want to do that and for whatever reason can't attend the potluck, they will be in the office right after before we move over to Jer Dean. Also, we're continuing to work on the Know Your Leader series, so if there's anyone in particular that you think would be a good fit for that, please talk to me, Holly, or one of our members. Thanks, guys.
Are there any questions or comments for the Events Committee? Go ahead.
I can confirm we do not have lithium batteries in our cards, you guys. We're doing our part, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Local Affairs Committee.
Hi, guys. Is this working? Can you guys hear me? Okay. I think you've probably heard enough from me tonight. Thank you for your participation and excitement for this meeting. Obviously, Local Affairs is going to be working hard in the next few weeks and months with all of the things that you guys will be emailing to me. Make sure you email them to me. I'd like to give special thanks to Eric and Ella and Mindy and Claire Lewis, who's not here. I could not have done this without them, so just a little round of applause for them would be great right now. And then just remember to email me all those things. Thank you, guys, again for your participation tonight.
Are there any questions or comments for the Local Affairs Committee? All right, seeing none, let's have one more round of applause for Local Affairs and the great meeting they hosted tonight. Thank you all. With that, we'll move over to Sustainability.
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you, Monet, for making sure the cards don't have lithium batteries. That's been a big help, saving the planet single-handedly. Also, I did want to talk about our website does have a lot of information for recycling in regards to where you can recycle in Ames as well as on campus. So if you ever have any questions or if somebody ever comes up to you and asks, hey, where can I find this? Sustainability website or Sustainability Committee website, which Alex has graciously put together for us, so thank you again to him. It also shows you how to save money using sustainability, which personally, I love money, so. Also, the Live Green website does have a lot of information. Essentially, there's a ton of places you can find information about recycling or sustainability opportunities around Ames as well. Steve Coats, Mr. Recycling himself, is currently developing a website in partnership with the city of Ames and the people over there, where you can literally just type in what you're trying to get rid of, and it'll show you where you can dispose of it properly on campus as well as in Ames. And that should be up and running around January, I believe you said, but that's, you'll have to get, I'll get back to you guys on that one. As well, we also met with Nolan earlier today. He is the coordinator for sustainability of the city of Ames, so now we've officially opened up that partnership and line of communication with him, and you'll probably be seeing a lot of stuff from us that is coming through him to try to get a gauge on how the student body is feeling about a lot of their initiatives. Another thing is that tomorrow, I'm personally giving opening remarks at the Iowa Recycling Association Conference, which is just a win for Sustainability Committee because we're getting the word out not only about student government, but about what we're doing, which is very epic and cool. And then, yeah, that's it for me. Abby's turn.
Okay, so just kind of to address some of the things that, is this on? Okay, my bad. So we are working with Resource Recovery System. That's one of our main goals this semester, or this year, but you'll hear a lot more about that later. So just know that we are like in talks with them. We have a meeting this Friday with Mark Peebler, who is the superintendent. And then also to quickly address kind of the plastic bag issue, we are working with ISU Dining to come up with initiatives to decrease plastic bag usage on campus. It is just that thing of working through, we can't ban plastic bags, but that is something that we're working with. Aside from that, we had two green initiative funds passed on Monday, one for a solar charging station with Engineers for Sustainable Iowa, so that's going to be great. It'll be over by the sand volleyball courts. And then also for one from our committee for recycling magnets with QR codes to the ISU Student Government website, specifically our tab on recycling and where to recycle. And aside from that, we have Narcan training with the Health and Wellness Committee the week after break, so we're super excited for that. Yeah, I think that's it. Thanks. Definitely reach out if you have like any concerns. We love when people are concerned, so, yeah.
With that, the floor is open for questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to Health and Wellness.
Hey, guys. Not too much to update for Health and Wellness this week. We finished the Green Flags Awareness posters. Last week, we sent them to Sam Shelton. He just responded this week with any adjustments he wanted to be made. There wasn't any, he just had a grammatical error that we fixed. So those are going to be sent to Student Engagement so they can get posted around. PR supplied us with a great list of student organizations to include that poster along with an email so that we can spread some more awareness about green flags. And then the last thing I have is the Green Dot Training is scheduled. I'm sure you guys all got the email. December 4th, 5 to 6, has a working meeting before Senate. I encourage everyone to be there. I mentioned it at Cabinet, I'll say it again. It's going to be great. I would really like a great showing at that meeting. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for the Health and Wellness Committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Legislative Ambassadors.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Again, okay. Not a whole lot for updates. Legislative ambassadors met last week. Very productive meeting, got a lot of progress made on our legislative goals for the year. And right now, I'm currently working with Sophia McGill's office, who works with President Winterstein to get her to come in and speak to our group at our next meeting. Other than that, working on still planning and getting details finalized for Big 12 on the Hill.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into that other category. This is an opportunity to speak about any committees that are not otherwise represented on tonight's agenda.
So I just want to say that, to spread the word, the dining project's done. We're going to have some options for people that are staying in residence halls during Thanksgiving break. If you guys could, I don't know, share the news, that would be great. Thank you.
Right, are there any other updates in this other category? Seeing none, we'll move into comments from the Judicial Branch. If we do not have a representative of the Judicial, we'll then move to comments from our advisor. All right, no comments from our advisor. Finally, comments from the Executive Branch with President Hirsch.
I know you guys thought for a second I wasn't going to have any comments either, but I have just a few. I really want to thank everyone's time and energy and effort for the Joint City Council meeting today. It went incredible. Emily, thank you for your leadership. I also want to add to after this meeting, and I always know that they run later than I thought where they're going to, but Monet has spent about eight hours cooking an organic turkey. Organic turkey, mashed potatoes, all sorts of things. Even if you didn't bring food for the event, we encourage you to go, even if it's for five minutes. Spend a lot of time and energy on Monet's part in the Events Committee, so please go there. I'm going to be there. I have some cookies, so you get a cookie at least. Really excited for that. Emily Shaw, or Amy Shaw, rather, is going to be our new administrative assistant. Her first day will be the first Monday in December when we're all back from Thanksgiving break, so I encourage you to go down, greet her, say hello, be excited to work with her because she could not be more excited to work with us. She may be even watching this live stream right now, so Amy, we're excited to have you. Thank you so much. That's all I have. I hope everyone has a safe break. I know we all earned it.
Are there any questions or comments for the Executive Branch? Seeing none, we'll move into our business for this evening, starting first with external matter 2024-2-027F, funding for Trend Magazine with Senator, in the absence of Senator Jones, Speaker Momine.
I yield my opening speaking privilege to Senator Kamier.
Hi, everyone. So you saw this on first read, I believe, two weeks ago, so we just spent a little more time with it in Finance Committee, but it did pass through positively, and we also have a representative here, and I will lend the floor to them.
Hello, my name is Sean, sorry. My name is Sean. I'm the treasurer for Trend Magazine. I'm not sure how much information you guys have read already on the bill, but we're asking for around $6,000 to fill the rest of our order to print magazines at the end of the year.
And with that, the floor is open for discussion, starting first with Senator Azan.
Can you talk about like Trend Magazines, what you guys do, where you can find these prints on campus? Is it just digital or, you know, print press magazines as well?
Yeah, no, of course. So Trend Magazine is fashion magazine, to put it blanket statement. We have a bunch of subcommittees that focus on different parts of fashion or just expression, I guess. They'll do photo shoots, write a little editorial piece for it. We put it all into a magazine that is physically printed and just kind of dropped off at different buildings around campus, kind of like the daily magazines or the daily newspaper. We also have the website, yeah.
Yeah, so I was looking at the student organization page that you have, and you have only 10 members. Is it just not updated or you have more members working on this?
Yeah, we have, I guess, had some issue with our members officially signing onto the website, through the Stuorg website, but we have 75 members who've paid dues so far.
Okay, and is it associated or affiliated with like, you know, Trend Magazine at all or it's like a separate student-run thing?
Sorry.
Is it affiliated with like Trend Magazine or is it a student-run separate thing that you are doing?
This is, yeah, the affiliated with Trend Magazine. This is the magazine for Trend.
Do you get any funding from them?
From AMD?
Yeah, from the actual magazine, Trend Magazine. I don't know about, you want to talk?
Point of information, he's asking if there's a higher organization than Trend Magazine or is it just you guys?
No, it is just us.
Okay.
All right, it looks like Senator Agarwal may have stepped out for a moment, so we'll move over to Senator Moisanga.
Motion to remove Senator Nandl from the row.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, Senator Nandl shall be removed. Senator Shamsai.
Okay, I can look at your magazine. It's amazing magazine, and you did a really great job, but my question is that these days, most of the magazines try to go to the digital version instead of just have a paper copy. So I want to ask you, is there any chance you just reduce the number of copies that you're going to have for this magazine and just publish it as a digital version? Because right now, the living green and using less paper is very high priority, so I want to ask you, is there any opportunity or is there any way that you reduce the number of copies of this magazine so you don't need any font?
Yeah, well, in the past, we've printed a little over double this amount that we hope to print this year, kind of in that same mindset where we know a lot of it gets wasted. So we compiled the entire year's worth of photo shoots into one big magazine that gets printed. And I know the, I sat in for a little bit of the meeting before, I know sustainability and, like you said, just eco-friendly policies are on the mind tonight, but these are magazines that our members don't throw away. They're like about yay thick, and from what I've seen from other members in the club, they, you collect them, you know, the whole, over the years that you're in the club. We have reduced the amount we've printed, and we are moving more towards filling out the website, but there is a part of like, when you think like Vogue Magazine or other kind of fashion magazines, there's some part of the culture that we would like to hold on to with the physical copy.
All right, we'll go Vice Speaker Persley.
I would like to say to Azan's point, they are paying for over half of it by themselves, so they're just asking for the rest of that cost. But then, secondly, I would like to say that I think it kind of takes away from the aesthetic of it if it's digital. I know I've collected a couple of the Trend Magazines, and they're really cool pieces of literature, so should definitely look into getting one of those copies.
Senator Agarwal.
I would like to say I had a copy that I went down and got, so if anyone wants to see it, it's with Azan.
All right, Senator Rahman.
I also appreciate Trend Magazine. Did you ever think of doing a print-to-order? So instead of printing bulk, you would just print to like maybe subscriptions, like students could have and give you their email, and then maybe that way you're not printing as much, just a suggestion.
Yeah, we've thought about the just different ways to handle it. We'd like to keep it. Yeah, we've thought about the just different ways to handle it. We'd like to keep it free. So by ordering in bulk, we can keep the cost kind of low and then just distribute them out as members come or they take some for their families.
Second.
Moved and seconded to end debate at this time. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. Any closing comments with Speaker Momine? All right. Seeing no closing comments at this time, because this is a finance bill, we'll move into a roll call vote, starting first with Ione Dimhoff. Rahman. Rolls. Reinhardt. Marcus. Pelzer. O'Connor. Pallan. Moisanga. Nivenhoven. Azan. Camire. Pettasani. Hartley. Agarwal. Shamsaie. Verger. Snyder. Momine. James. Bailey. Johnson. Neil. Sloop. Persley. And Cronin. Purely for the sake of that several people have been left off or have left themselves the role tonight. Did I miss anyone in that, or is my role correct? All right, perfect. One second while we tally that. All right, and so with the final vote of 26 to 0 to 0, congratulations, the motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move into special orders, starting first with item 2024-2-043SG, seating a senator to the Rules Committee with Speaker Momine.
I guess I don't know if it's a friendly or an amendment, but it needs to be changed to Senator, not at-large on the title.
I would take that as a friendly if you accept it.
Yes. And then with that, I'm going to invite Senator Bailey up to the podium to tell you all a little bit about herself. She did attend our last rules meeting, and I think that she'd be a great addition.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paige Bailey, and I'm honored to serve as an off-campus senator. I'm here to express my interest in joining the Rules Committee. So what excites me the most about this opportunity is the chance to deepen my knowledge of bylaws and procedures while contributing to potential improvements in the Senate's structure. Understanding these rules isn't just about mechanics. It's about empowering ourselves as leaders to make informed decisions and enabling our organization to better serve those we represent. So thank you all for considering me for the Rules Committee. I deeply appreciate this opportunity and the chance to grow as a senator while contributing to the essential work of this committee. Wishing you all, I'm wishing you all a safe and joyful Thanksgiving holiday.
With that, the floor is open, starting with Senator Agarwal.
I would just like to thank you for taking the time to have such a well-thought-out speech.
Fair enough. Senator Pettasani. What is one word you would use to describe yourself?
Probably silly.
All right, Senator Hartley.
I would just like to say that I think Paige will be a great addition to the Rules Committee, and we're excited to have you.
With that, the floor is open for any further discussion.
Call the questions.
Moved and seconded. Are there any, oh, did you have something? All right. Motion to remove Senator Shamsaie from the role. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing none, he shall be removed. All right, with that, pardon? One second. With that, it's been moved and seconded and debated at this time. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. Closing comments with Speaker Momine.
Unfortunately, you guys can't beat me to it. UC.
UC has been called for there. I think we got it. With that, are there any objections to passing this nominee by way of unanimous consent? Seeing no objections. Congratulations, the motion carries.
I motion to table 2024-2-008SD. We are waiting for a justice to get here so that if you are seated, you can be sworn in and immediately be added to the roll. She will be here soon, like 10-ish minutes or so. I'm just going to table it so we can pick it up as soon as the justice gets here, so that way she can leave when she's done.
Moved and seconded to table item 008SD, so it can be picked up again once a justice is present. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections, it shall be placed on the table. We'll then move on to item 2024-2-004SG, seating a senator to the Idea Committee with Vice Speaker Persley.
Friendly. Vice Speaker Persley, you might have to take it as friendly. It says sustainability.
Oh, I see where you're talking about. Yes, I will take that.
All right.
Okay, this is seating a senator to the Idea Committee. They can come up and speak a little bit about themselves.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lebiha Rahman. I am an LA senator. I was sat on Week 7. Really been enjoying myself. Took my time with choosing a committee because it's an important decision. I met with Ari, and I introduced her to Cassandra, and I met Sophia, and I've met with them, and yeah, I really want to join Ideas.
With that, the floor is open for any discussion. Starting with Senator Azan.
Can you talk about anything that you are passionate about to work under Idea Committee? Any projects, anything that you are passionate about to work on?
Well, I have so many ideas. I can't even begin. Anyway, no one got that joke. Anyway, so DEI is very important to me. As someone, as a woman of color, I just want to advocate for everyone on campus, so no particular projects, but I have a lot of ideas.
All right, is there any further discussion? Moved and seconded and debated at this time. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. Closing comments with Vice Speaker Persley.
UC.
UC has been called for. Are there any objections to passing this nominee by way of unanimous consent? Seeing no objections. Congratulations, the motion carries. Next, we'll see item 2024-2-045SG, seating at-larges to the Idea Committee, again with Vice Speaker Persley.
I'm going to do a friendly to myself to change the ordered clause to Idea Committee. Okay, yeah, there are two at-larges. There's one at-large, so I'm going to.
I motion to amend it to reflect only the current at-large who is here to speak for themselves, so I motion to remove. I'm going to butcher this name, and I'm sorry. Louis Rojo. Yeah, I'm going to stop there before I embarrass myself.
A second.
Do you have an objection, Senator Azan?
Sorry, can you repeat here?
So in past, we have seen that, you know, the directors present the speech, written down statements on behalf of the committee members. If there's like emergency exam or something going on, do you have anything?
Yes, so the other at-large, he shot to me, I think, yesterday at night, and then he said that he's having some trouble with, first of all, appearing in front of the Senate today, and also kind of taking out the time to attend the weekly meetings. So he wants to wait until he gets his schedule for next semester so he can check, and then he wants to join then.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to amend the ordered clause to only reflect the at-large nominee that is present. Are there any objections to that amendment? Seeing none, it shall be made. We're now back on the bills as a whole with Vice Speaker Persley.
And now you can talk a little bit about.
Hello, my name is Emily Carr, and I'm a freshman here at ISU, majoring in political science, global resources, and international studies. I'm also currently a part of the International Student Council alongside other language-based clubs. I joined the Student Council Idea Committee for various reasons. I personally think that I would really like to develop my leadership abilities, so like public speaking, collaborative work, everything like that. I would really like to work on those. And then professionally, I just want to help improve our community here at ISU. And I think that the Idea Committee provides a great platform for taking some of those initiatives, so thank you for having me.
And with that, the floor is open for any discussion or questions. Moved and seconded to end debate. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. You may wish to take it as a friendly to make at-large singular, by the way, on that bill. But moved and seconded. Are there any objections to ending debate at this time? Seeing no objections to ending debate. Any closing comments with Vice Speaker Persley?
UC.
UC has been called for. Are there any objections to passing this nominee by way of unanimous consent? Seeing no objections. Congratulations, the motion carries. Next, we'll see item 2024-2-046SG, seating a senator to the Local Affairs Committee with Senator Pettasani.
Apologies for that. Hi, I'm trying to get on Local Affairs, so we will be waiving a bylaw for me to be able to be seated on this committee again. But in terms of my time commitments, next semester, I have lightened my course load, so I'm trying to take on more responsibilities within student government to be able to get my, get some projects through, but also trying to be part of assets during the assets process hopefully, and being seated on. Local Affairs would benefit me in that process as well, gaining that knowledge and being able to do, to do what I can to help in that process with Mindy and Eric.
And with that, the floor is open, starting first with Senator Azan.
Okay, remind me, I do remember there was some discussion about two senators interesting about more than two committees, and then we waived it for one senator, and then we did not waive for the other one, or I don't know. But at least one was actually seated in the other one, so.
Yeah, so we, this.
It was Camire, right?
Yes, Senator Camire did bring up a bill regarding altering that bylaw, but that bill did not change, so we decided just to waive the bylaws, waive the bylaw if necessary for seating senators onto a committee if they are going past that threshold. And it's already been waived for me once so I can be seated on health and wellness, and now I'm adding on Local Affairs to my duties.
So how many committees, internal as well as external, that you are involved right now?
If we add Local Affairs in total, it will be about six official and unofficial ones, because I'm currently on, officially on health and wellness, rules, and finance. And then I am currently unofficially on PR as I'm helping, I am the front, the front-end producer for the podcast, and I also sit on the chief advisory board as well.
And you're sure that adding one more will not mess up your academics?
This is not a problem for me. I currently hold a 3.97 GPA with an A in all my classes and ha, it's not a problem for me.
Are you?
Senator Camire.
Why specifically did you choose Local Affairs?
One was because I am, I'm trying to plan around being on assets and trying to be a part of that whole process during January, and it is, it's not a requirement, but it is heavily advised that you are on Local Affairs if you're trying to join assets as well. So it would benefit me to be a part of that, is what I've been told. And I also would like to work with Emily Boland directly in terms of, in terms of working alongside her for other projects regarding CyRide, so.
Okay, and why specifically did you not make this commitment to Local Affairs like a few weeks ago when they, I'm sure, could have used another person for the city council meeting?
Because I originally decided that I think it would not be beneficial if I was on the committee because I didn't have the project ideas I currently do. And to be able to work alongside Emily and the members of Local Affairs would benefit me now as I have that project ongoing regarding Safe Ride and CyRide.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Moisanga.
Senator Pettasani, how many credits are you taking next semester?
I'm taking 14.
Are you sure 14 credits and six official and unofficial committees, that won't ruin your mental capacity?
That will not be a problem. This semester, I have done a lot more than I should be, I, most people think I should be doing, but I think I was able to handle it perfectly, and adding on another will not be a problem with me decreasing my course load from 21 credit hours this semester to 14 next semester.
All right, Senator Rolls.
I would kind of like to vouch for Pettasani. Yet again, I don't know how he does it, but he's clearly getting it done. He's very dedicated, and he clearly has the good grades, and he's clearly performing, so I really can't argue with adding another one. And I heard that our nonprofit coordinator would like to say something, so I would like to yield the rest of my time to nonprofit coordinator.
Hello, hello. You guys don't normally get to hear from me, but in this particular instance, I'm going to say this. Either you can waive the bylaws now, or you waive them in the future, because 8.3.2, that's the assets liaison part of the bylaws. And in that part, it states that being an assets liaison means you are a voting member of Local Affairs and/or are seated by the Senate onto Local Affairs. So again, I reiterate, either you waive this bylaw now and allow him to be on Local Affairs, or we write a bill and I put it towards Senate in the future, essentially doing the same thing anyways. Thank you.
Excuse me, Senator Azan.
Yeah, so that was like along the similar line. I was part of Asset last year. I didn't sit into Local Affairs. If that's the major motivation, I think you can still.
It's a part of the bylaws.
Okay. I don't know what happened. It's been a while, but yes, I was not part of Local Affairs at all, and I was officially a voting member for Asset last year, so with that, are you?
Senator Camire.
I just wanted to add to our nonprofit coordinator. I wasn't aware that it was part of the bylaws. When he originally talked about it, he didn't mention that it was part of the bylaws, so I want to apologize about the miscommunication there. Sorry about that.
Moved and seconded to end debate. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. Closing comments with Senator Pettasani.
I have none. UC.
And technically, you can do that. Senator Pettasani, the nominee has called for UC. Are there any objections to passing the nominee by way of unanimous consent? Senator Agarwal.
I feel like he should not call UC on his own bill, and someone else should do it.
All right. With that, I believe you said a placard vote. All right. We've had an objection to UC. A placard vote has been called for, and so with that, we'll do this. Did you have something, or are you? All right, just checking. With that, we'll move into a placard vote, so I'll give you the opportunity to vote yes, no, or you may abstain on this nominee. First of all, those in favor, please. And Senator Pettasani, I know you don't have a placard, but please indicate. Okay. All right, those opposed. And any abstentions? All right. Pardon, Senator Sloop, I believe you abstained, correct? All right. All right, so with the final vote of 24 to 0 to 1, congratulations. The motion carries.
I motion to pick back up 2024-2-008 GS, SD. Sorry, I have it written down wrong on my notebook.
All right, now the justice is present. There's been a motion to once again consider item 008 SD seating of an engineering senator. Moved and seconded. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll immediately move into item 2024-2-008 SD seating of an engineering senator with Speaker Momini.
All right, so rules met last week to see the nominee who was sent from the Engineering Student Council. Had a great interview and was sent favorably. I'm going to invite her to the podium. Just tell us name, major, why you want to be a part of Senate. And then we may or may not ask you questions. You never know.
Hi, guys. I'm Lillian Shin. I'm a sophomore in biomedical engineering and I'm interested in, in being an engineering senator. And the committees that I'm interested in is health and wellness, especially since I believe, I'm really interested in volunteering. And I feel like if I enter into health and wellness, I can really try to promote the volunteering aspect of mental health. And I'm really interested in that. And if I were to describe myself in one word, I would probably say that I am a listener. Any questions?
With that, the floor is open, starting with Senator Azan.
Can you talk about leadership experience, if you have any in past?
Yeah, so I'm currently a peer mentor for my learning community in the biomedical engineering department slash major. And in there, I lead around like 30 students and I feel like that is probably a good base to start with. I've been doing it for a semester and I've definitely learned a lot from it. And I feel like that would, should reflect pretty well on me being an engineering senator.
All right, Senator Sloop.
Since we can't ask you what word describes you, what color describes your personality?
I'm probably gonna have to say like a light green, probably.
Senator Pettisani.
I would personally like to vouch for this individual after getting to know her, kind of because Kevin lived in, in Spiny last year and her dropping by on occasion. So after getting to know her and her work ethic, I think she would be a great addition to Senate and health and wellness, if, if at all possible as well, so.
Senator Kamier.
I just wanted to basically agree with what Senator Pettisani said. I mean, she's already been around the office, like she's basically a senator without like having voted or anything yet, so called a question.
Moved and seconded to end debate at this time. Are there any objections to doing so? Pardon? All right, seeing no objections. Closing comments with Speaker Momini.
UC.
UC has been called for. Are there any objections to passing this nominee by way of unanimous consent? Seeing no objections. Congratulations. The motion carries. And if we can have you stay up there for one moment, we'll get you sworn in.
I would have your right hand repeat after me. I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
To execute the duties of my position.
To execute the duties of my position.
As prescribed in the Constitution.
As prescribed in the Constitution.
And laws of government.
And laws of government.
For the benefit of all students.
For the benefit of all students.
Congratulations.
I would then entertain a motion to add Senator Shin to the roll. Are there any objections? Seeing none, she shall be sat. All right, so with that, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we've completed our special orders for this evening. Next, we'll move into general orders, starting first with item 2024-2-003 SR with Senator Kamier.
All right, so for those of you who were here earlier in the semester, you probably remember this bill on first read all the way back in October. Obviously, it's been tabled since then due to discussions between the Iowa State Administration, the Department of Regents, and just internal discussions. And in general, just looking at the bill, I'm sure everyone can see that there are a lot of proposed amendments that we would like to make. So I'll just go right into them.
Are you moving those amendments? All right. So if I'm not mistaken, you, it's been moved and seconded, so all of the highlighted amendments on the resolution.
Unless there's like an objection to go one by one, which I can do, but yes.
All right, moved and seconded to make all of these amendments in one go there. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, they shall be made. We're now back on the bill as a whole. Here, we'll give it one second while we update that bill to reflect the new amendments. Senator Kamier.
While I'm making these amendments, can I motion for like a three-minute or two-minute recess? Because this is going to be like really boring while you watch me like make these changes.
Depends. Is there a second? Moved and seconded recess for two minutes while we make these amendments. Hold on, folks. Are there any objections to recessing for two minutes? Seeing none, we will reconvene at 8:23. All right, everyone, if we can make our way back to our seats, we'll reconvene here in just a moment. All right, everyone, the time is 8:28 PM and I hereby call the Senate back to order. I would firstly entertain a motion to remove Senator Rolls from the roll. Are there any objections? Seeing none, he shall be removed. So with that, we're back on discussion on item 2024-2-003 SR. The amendments have been, have been made and now are reflected on screen. The floor is open for discussion.
Call the question?
Moved and seconded to end debate at this time. Are there any objections to doing so? Seeing no objections. Closing comments from Senator Kamier.
I guess I would just say, I hope everyone has read through the changes, read through the bill and also is aware of what the Senate file is, who it impacts, and who we represent. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll move into a vote at this time.
UC.
UC has been called for. Are there any objections to passing this motion by way of unanimous consent? Seeing no objections, the motion carries. With that, we've completed our second read business for tonight. With that, we'll move into new business, starting first with item 2024-2-032F, funding a female CPR mannequin for the kinesiology department with Senator Pelzer.
Hi, guys. So you can see everything in the act, in the act. Both of Iowa State's first aid courses train students in life-saving skills, notably cardiopulmonary resuscitation. At this time, the classes only have male CPR mannequins, which are very useful, but we don't have any female mannequins, which we could really benefit from. Right now, the classes are funded through course fees and they haven't had surplus funds for a females, for a female CPR mannequin. So funding this purchase through student government would really help students be more prepared to help a woman in need if that ever arises.
All right, so with that, the floor is open. I will say for our new senators, new business items are open for questions of intent, those being yes or no questions, and then we'll actually discuss and vote next week. So with that, are there any questions of intent? I appreciate it. It will come back next week, which is when we'll call it to question and vote on it. So if there are no questions of intent, we'll move on to item 2024-2-033F, funding the AI and ML club with Senator Kamier.
Everyone, so this was a funding request made. This is also a brand-new organization and this is in many ways just them trying to get started. So yeah, open to any questions.
Floor is open, starting with Senator Ray Hamon.
Just motion to remove myself from the roll.
All right, are there any objections? Seeing none, you shall be removed. We'll then move on to Vice Speaker personally.
I don't know if you, oh wait, this is a first read, isn't it? Actually, I take back.
Senator Azan.
Did you guys actually go through this in the finance?
Point of information is a first read.
Yeah, but like, did you talk it in finance?
Point of, we, after first read, it goes to finance.
So it's gonna get better. Awesome.
Yes.
All right, with that, any further questions of intent? I do appreciate it. It automatically does come back, but thank you. We'll come back to this and vote next week. Instead, moving on to item 2024-2-034F, funding for the Puerto Rican Student Association with Senator Pettisani.
The Puerto Rican Student Association is seeking some funding for a Puerto Rican cultural night, so it's just funding their catering. And this bill hasn't gone through finance yet. Just to mention, any first read finance bills have, go through Senate, then they come to finance, then they come back to Senate. So we'll be discussing this in finance to see how much we can actually fund them. But other than that, any questions of intent?
Starting, if you have one, Senator Agarwal. Pardon? Pardon? All right, do appreciate it. Are there any questions of intent? Seeing no questions of intent, yes, you are correct. It will come back next week. We'll, we'll call it to question then. All right, moving then on to 2024-2-035F, funding for the Neurodivergent Student Support Organization with Senator Pettisani.
This club, the Neurodivergent Student Support Organization does a lot regarding advocating for neurodiverse needs and just promoting awareness and working alongside neurodiverse students. So they're asking for some marketing material and trying to get some speakers and skills coaches to come in and trying to get a local trip for environmental enrichment. So as I said, this will be going to finance and we'll discuss further of what we can fund and what we cannot.
With that, the floor is open for any questions of intent. Seeing none, this item will return next week. We'll now move on to item 2024-2-036F, Vex U Cyber Robotics Club Funding with Senator Kamier.
Everyone, another funding bill. This time, I think we have someone on the Senate who is a very important member in this organization. Not going to reveal who that is. They might have a cough. Anyway, so this is basically a team registration fee. If you have any questions, let me know.
With that, the floor is open for any questions of intent? Seeing none, this will return next week. Next, looking at item 2024-2-037F, funding the Letters of Love Club. And in the absence of Senator Jones, that will go to Senator Nivenhoven.
This is an organization that provides cards for children in local hospitals. There's a lot of other organizations that also use them to get service hours and write cards to them.
With that, the floor is open for any questions of intent? Seeing none. Lastly, we'll look at item 2024-2-038F, funding Jingle Jog with Senator Kamier.
Okay. Last first read, I promise. So this one was sort of last minute, and I know first-year council has already gone through the annual allocation process, but in this case, they were expecting to be able to use the signs from last year. The lights on them don't work anymore. They're having to order new ones before Jingle Jog. So that's the context.
With that, the floor is open for any questions of intent? Seeing no questions of intent, that's right, that is our last new business item for this evening. So having completed our business, the floor is open for any general closing announcements. All right. Director Butler.
Just a reminder that I made a turkey for all of you and you should come eat it pretty pleased with the cherry on top. It'll be in jardine with gravy. That's true. Please come, so I don't have to carry a turkey home. Thank you. Bye.
Any further general closing announcements? All right. Seeing none, I think Monet stole my one announcement there. Please do come to that after this meeting. I promise there will be no bills, no business. We want to provide you some good food and celebrate Thanksgiving together. Please do show up to that. Holly and Monet have put in a tremendous amount of work and I think they've done a stellar job, so would love to see you all there. Once again, appreciate you all staying, not only for this meeting, but for the joint city council. I know, Jake, we're getting there. Don't worry. Really do appreciate your time. And with that, I'll yield to the Vice Speaker.
Thank you to everyone for doing such a great job tonight with the joint city council meeting and for having such great questions and come to the Thanksgiving feast.
And if we can hang on just one moment, it's the last closing announcement, I promise.
Don't leave. Don't leave. I have things to say. Okay. So first, yes, thank you, Emily, again, for the city council meeting. It was amazing. I hope you guys got lots of projects ideas, project ideas. I know I did. So I know this semester is almost over, but start thinking about maybe some you want to implement next semester. And then I'm just going to echo Outreach Director Gerdis. Please get your outreach credits, so I don't have to see you in rules, because that would make me sad. So do that, please. Also, if you're not on a committee, please find a committee, so I don't have to see you in rules. Thank you. And then we have Thanksgiving break, fall break. Have a wonderful fall break. Get some rest. You all deserve it. And then after that, we only have one meeting for this session. I know you're probably excited, but remember you still have things to do. We have a working meeting. The green dot, they're usually programs, but it's going to be a working meeting. Hate to be biased, but the green dot programs are always my favorite. So please make sure to be there. It's just a part of your role. So with that, motion to adjourn. Go Cyclones.
We are adjourned. See you all on December 4th.